We had a Zoom meeting last Friday.
You're welcome.
Very welcome, it's my privilege.
I was wondering who had to get on.
Hey man. Good to see you. You alright?
I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you so much. We got bad news too. Yeah, yeah.
First name? We get a lot of nicknames. Okay, 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 yeah. Yeah.
I know, this is amazing, it's all happening.
Yeah, we've been texting. I see. We've been texting, it's like a community. My national application through Friday. Not many noise, not many words. Where this is different than that. Dude, she did tell us that. That was one of my... We know her. She's working forty-four hours. Her thirty-seven feet. Her thirty-eight feet. Her second thing she can buy did. My dad. And I, I... So this is the one that... The white I wear. That was from... He did like, Red did this one, he didn't like... I didn't like the blue, I didn't like the shirt that I have. Didn't handle it.
No.
Yeah, but look, I... What if I just change the shirt? If I can edit the shirt.
You can tone it down, you can bring it down.
Like guy.
I'm not listening to that, I'm like...
Sitting him at the... Look at that, like, that shirt that I wore.
But, I like that. Whichever one's like...
You saw about the whole TV changing. Friday now. Well, I need to know, yeah. Yeah, because if I... Do an interview with him. Let's do Friday.
Colleagues, as soon as we get a deputy in the chambers, we can start the meeting. Deputy, if you could, call the meeting to order.
All rise. Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes, the Honorable Board of the County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee is now in session pursuant to adjournment. Please remain standing.
Pastor Cedric Taylor, if you could, leave us in the invocation.
Good afternoon. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this commission, the gathering of these men and women, and their leadership that is helping our city and our county to grow and to develop. So Lord, as we invoke your presence, God, we just ask you to help us, for your word tells us very plainly, Father, that we must pray for those who are in authority, because this is the way that we lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. So we trust the Holy Spirit to help us as we invoke your presence, your comforter, your keeper, your wisdom, your insight, your discernment, and Lord, we need all of those things. And so we pray that this chairwoman and this county, this commission, Father, will just be endowed with your wisdom and your insight, even as they have business that they have to discuss today and matters that they have to work through. I thank you, Father, that from discussion and deliberation, Father, that there'll be processes and there'll be works of effective strategy, Father, that will help us get further or the direction of this city and this region and this county. So Father, give them strength, give them discernment, give them wisdom, and guide them through every topic they're going to discuss today, Father. And I thank you that viable solutions that work for the citizens, Father, are going to be had, because we've asked you to step in and to help us, Father, give us that wisdom. So we thank you and we give you praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Vice Chair, if you could, lead us in the pledge. May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you could, call the roll.
Commissioner Whately.
Present.
Clay Bev.
Present.
Caswell. Sugarman. Mills.
Present.
Ford. Wright.
Present.
Thornton. Morrison. Brooks. Lowry. Bradford.
Present.
Chairwoman, Avent.
Present.
We have eight present.
Could you have a quorum?
Can, uh, I'd like to ask for approval of the October sixth, um, October sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Can we do that without objection? Seeing none, minutes are approved. It's possible to join for public comment. It's possible to join the meeting in two ways, via the designated email account, boc.e-mail at shelbycountytn.gov, or via phone at nine zero one two 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 one two three four.
Parliamentarian, if you could, read the roll.
Members of the public who desire to address the county commission shall request permission by completing an appearance card which will be given to the chair by deputy. Members of the public shall be permitted to address the county commission unless ruled out of order by the chair or denied the opportunity to speak by majority vote of the commissioners present and voting. Please note that as it pertains to public comment, our rules of order set a limit of no longer than three minutes. When recognized by the chair, the chair may set a limit for discussion by the public of less than three minutes for each individual, if circumstances require. Finally, to the members of the public, if you would like to express your pleasure or displeasure on a matter before the county commission, please do so by raising your thumb up or pointing it down, as opposed to applause or other expressions of approval or disapproval. Disrupted members of the public are subject to removal from the commission chambers by the deputy sheriff. Thank you for your attention and in advance for your cooperation today.
Thank you. I'd like to now take a moment to recognize the staff and commissioner birthdays for the month of October. Happy birthday to Cecilia Nichols, whose birthday was on October ninth, and then also happy birthday to Victor Anderson, whose birthday was October nineteenth. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Um, I'd like to ask Parliamentarian, if you could, read item number two.
Item two is a special resolution honoring businessman, author and coach Bill Courtney, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. This item was deferred in September eighth, two thousand twenty-five commission meeting.
I'm in, thank you.
Commissioner Ford, you recognize?
Thank you, uh, I'd like to move this item, uh, it's been brought to my attention that the sponsor, uh, would not be here for this item, so I'd like to move for this item to be, uh, presented at the next commission meeting that's on the calendar.
Okay, so our next commission meeting is on Monday, November seventeenth, so...
I'm sorry, uh, my apology, the staff just informed me, not the November meeting, but the December commission meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to move to defer until the December fifteenth meeting. Can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Bradford, can do that without objection? Alright, so moved. Um, Commissioner Bradford, if you could.
Vice Chair Bradford, I'd like to take a moment to thank Apostle Cedric Taylor, my pastor, for coming out to do the invocation today. Appreciate, uh, not only his words of wisdom, but earnest prayer for us as a city and as a county and as a governing body. And so I'd like to present, uh, to Pastor Apostle Cedric Taylor, on October twenty-eighth, the, um, award for chaplain, recognition of chaplain of the Board of Commissioners for today.
Thank you, Chair Avent, let's go ahead and read item number three.
Item three is a resolution to honor and recognize Dr. Brandy Blake De La Cruz, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Tennessee Teacher of the Year, sponsored by Vice Chair David C. Bradford Jr.
Dr. De La Cruz, if you'd come up here and join me? I see Principal Jones over there, I think he's, uh, TikToking us, so he may, he may stay seated, but he's welcome to join us as well. Um, so hopefully everyone is aware, but, uh, the Tennessee Teacher of the Year is standing right here with us, uh, from Shelby County. And so today, uh, I have a resolution, um, honoring her work, um, in, in the school system, and, um, as I told you earlier, I'm not going to read all of it, um, I'm just going to hit the highlights. Uh, I did get the opportunity to spend about thirty minutes talking to, uh, Dr. De La Cruz earlier, um, and she has some, uh, wonderful ideas in mind, uh, for education of all of Shelby County, um, and so I think she may share a few of those with us today, I'm putting her on the spot a little bit, uh, but anyways, just great conversation, so. Um, whereas Shelby County takes immense pride in, uh, honoring its esteemed citizens and recognizes individuals who contribute significantly to the betterment and the unity of the community, and whereas Dr. De La Cruz, a Collierville High School math teacher, has been named Tennessee's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Teacher of the Year, and whereas Dr. De La Cruz is a dedicated Shelby County educator consistently demonstrating exemplary public service through her impactful work as a secondary mathematics educator, the Department of Education says she is known for her deep sense of purpose and care in the classroom, and that she was selected for this distinction because she makes math engaging, relevant, and accessible to all students. Uh, and whereas, Collierville Schools noted that Dr. De La Cruz is the first district teacher to be named Tennessee Teacher of the Year, calling this recognition a historic milestone. Proud that her hard work and impact are being celebrated at the state level, Collierville High School's principal, sitting right over there filming us, uh, Roger Jones, um, commented, stating, "This incredible honor recognizes Dr. De La Cruz's outstanding dedication to her students, her passion for teaching, and her commitment to excellence in education." And whereas, Collierville Director of Schools, Dr. Russell Dyer, says, "Dr. De La Cruz, uh, represents the very best of Collierville Schools and the teaching profession," further noting, "Her passion for students, her dedication to excellence, and her ability to inspire the next generation of educators is truly remarkable. This is a well-deserved honor. Dr. De La Cruz will now serve as an ambassador for educators and students across the state." Now therefore, be it resolved by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to hereby honor Dr. Brandy De La Cruz, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Tennessee Teacher of the Year for her outstanding contributions to the students and community of Shelby County.
Alright, thank you Commissioner Bradford, and for all of the commissioners here for this amazing recognition. Um, what you should know about me is I'm not originally from Memphis or even Collierville, but I have found my home here. Um, I have taught in Memphis, um, Shelby County or Collierville for nine years, and I don't plan on leaving anytime soon. Y'all have made this place a community, you have made us a family, and it is an honor for me to represent this amazing family, this amazing community, and all that I do. I take this honor, this award as Tennessee Teacher of the Year very seriously, and I hope that I can make everyone here proud of everything I do this year and how I represent y'all, my family, moving forward. So thank you.
Parliamentarian, please read item number four.
Item four is a resolution designating the third week of October as Hunter Syndrome Awareness Week in Shelby County, sponsored by Chairwoman Shante K. Avent and Vice Chairman David C. Bradford Jr.
Alright, I don't know if anyone's here, uh, representing the, um, Hunter Syndrome. There you are, wonderful, thank you. Today, uh, we have a resolution, um, marking, uh, the third week in October as Hunter Syndrome Awareness. Um, we have put the resolution together, uh, Hunter Syndrome, I knew you were going to make me do this, that's why you're making me talk. Also known as myokopa, myokapalysacuritis? Miko... Okay. MPS2 is a rare genetic disorder affecting approximately one in a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand live male births worldwide. And whereas Hunter Syndrome is caused by a deficiency of the enzyme, uh, IS, I2S, resulting in harmful accumulation of complex sugars in the body's cells and leading to progressive damage to organs and systems, including the brain. And whereas, symptoms often appear in early childhood and may include developmental delays, physical impairments, impairments, and a significantly shortened lifespan, and whereas, early diagnosis and intervention with critical, are critical to improving quality of life and outcomes for individuals affected by Hunter Syndrome. Uh, this, this resolution supports the designation of the third week of October as National Hunter Syndrome Awareness Week, which encourages federal agencies, research institutions, and advocacy organizations to expand efforts in education, research, and the development of treatments for Hunter Syndrome, urges continued congressional support for funding rare disease research and initiative, and initiatives that directly benefit individuals with families in the Hunter Syndrome community, and calls upon the people of the United States to observe the week with appropriate awareness campaigns, advocacy efforts, and educational activities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners that we do hereby recognize and designate the third week of October as Hunter Syndrome Awareness Week.
And we just want to have an opportunity, one, to bring advocacy and highlight this issue, but thank you to you for, um, your advocacy on behalf of your son, uh, in many ways that you're wanting to make sure that we as a community to come, can come together for early detection, but also have more research, and funding for that research is so important, so thank you.
Well, on behalf of my son, Josiah, and all of the Hunter Syndrome families, we just want to thank you for making our voices heard.
Madam Parliamentarian, can you read item number five?
Madam Parliamentarian, can you read item number five, please?
Item five is a certificate of appreciation presented to Mr. Lynn Young, sponsored by Commissioner Charlie A. Caswell Jr.
Commissioner Caswell?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I want to defer this to the next Monday meeting, November the seventeenth meeting.
Okay, all right, we'd like, there's a motion to defer this to the November seventeenth meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
Of a second by Commissioner Bradford, Vice Chair Bradford, can we do that without objection? Okay, so moved. Colleagues, if you could, take three minutes to review the consent agenda, and if there are any items you would like pooled, if you could set the timer. All right, Commissioners, Vice Chair Bradford?
I'd like to pull item number twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine. Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Clay Bibbs?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item number sixteen from being heard altogether. The Health Department no longer wants this item to be heard today.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
The Health Department does not want this item to be heard today.
Okay.
Item sixteen.
Commissioner Whaley?
All right, thank you, item twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. Okay, Commissioner Ford?
Six, please.
Oh, I thought I heard Commissioner Ford, item nineteen, thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Could we pull item twenty-eight, please?
Okay, so Parliamentarian, if you could read into the record, the... Okay, Commissioner Brooks? Okay. Parliamentarian, if you could read into the record, the consent agenda minus item six, thirteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. And I'd also like to pull item eight. Item eight.
Item seven comes from the Budget and Finance Committee with Chairman Whaley. Item seven is a resolution approving a contract with Customized Solution Company for business services, analysis, and needs assessments for the court systems, and the total amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a contingency of fifty thousand for a combined amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to commence upon execution of contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2026 Information Technology Service General Fund in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, sponsored by Commissioner Michael Whaley. Item nine is a resolution approving a contract with Avenue Government System LLC for the General Sessions Court Case Management System Maintenance in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred, seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents for the initial year and no more, a five percent increase for each renewal period, commencing from July first through twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This item requires the expenditure of General Sessions Court Clerk's FY 2026 Special Revenue Funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred, seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents, sponsored by Commissioner Michael Whaley. Item ten comes from the Public Works Committee with Commissioner Bradford as Chair, resolution amending the FY 2026 Operating Budget to accept grant funds in an amount of fifty thousand dollars from the NAP Foundation Incorporated to purchase Zoll cardiac monitors. This item requires the expenditure appropriation of grant funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, with a fifteen percent match contribution provided by the Shelby County Fire Enterprise Fund in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for a total amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item eleven is a resolution amending the FY 2026 Operating Budget to accept grant funds in an amount of fifty thousand dollars from the PK Seaman Charitable Trust to purchase Zoll cardiac monitors. This item requires expenditure appropriation of grant funds in an amount of fifty thousand dollars, with a fifteen percent grant match contribution provided by the Fire Enterprise Fund in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for a total amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item twelve is a resolution approving expenditures of funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five dollars to Dyersburg State Community College for the purchase of emergency medical service, education, and training service for the Shelby County Fire Department. This item requires the expenditures of FY 2026 Fire Service Enterprise Funds to Dyersburg State Community College for said services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item fourteen is a resolution amending the FY 2026 Operating Budget and approving a contract with Landmark Construction's General Contract Incorporated in an amount of three hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, and an extra work allowance in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, for a total amount of four hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars for rehabilitation of the E.E. Jeter wastewater treatment plant through the American Rescue Plan Water Infra... and Fracture Grant Program. This item requires appropriation of State American Rescue Plan Grants Funds in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, and Rosen Bridge's Special Revenue Funds in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars for a total appropriation of four hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item sixteen, a resolution approving a contract between Shelby County Government and Premium Parking of Memphis LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, to provide four hundred and fifty-one parking spaces and the parking garage located at 245 Washington, Memphis, Tennessee, for Shelby County employees. Said contract commences upon execution through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods, with the first year renewal period not to exceed an amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred, seventy-one dollars and forty cents, and the second year renewal period in an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-eight, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. This item requires exponential of fiscal year 2026 general funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item seventeen comes from the Hospital and Health Committee chaired by Commissioner Clay Bibbs. Item seventeen is a resolution approving a service provider contract between Shelby County Government on behalf of the Shelby County Health Department and New Harbor Security Incorporated for the provision of cybersecurity services, beginning upon execution through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This item authorized expenditure of FY 2026 general funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, sponsored by Commissioner Ms. Clay Bibbs. Item eighteen comes from the Law Enforcement Correction and Courts Committee with Acting Chair Commissioner Mills. Item eighteen is a resolution approving a sole-source contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in an amount not to exceed five hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars by Shelby County Government on behalf of the Shelby County Fire Department and Shelby County Sheriff's Office for maintenance support and cloud implementation service of the Motorola Computer-Aided Dispatch System currently used by fire and sheriff. This item requires expenditures of Shelby County Fire Fiscal Year 2026 Enterprise Funds with Sheriff Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Funds in an amount not to exceed five hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright. Item twenty is a resolution approving an emergency service contract between Shelby County Government and HVAC Technologies Incorporated on behalf of Shelby County Sheriff's Office for the replacement and installation of nine HVAC units at 6201 Haley Road at Jail East. This item requires expenditure of fiscal year 2026 Shelby County Sheriff's Office CIP Funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred, seventeen dollars and eighty cents, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright. Item twenty-one is a resolution to approve a single-source award with inside-outside circle foundation agreement to include two one-year options to renew and to approve the expenditure of funds for the first renewal for the Shelby County Sheriff's Office for the provision of therapy to residents inside the Shelby County Jail. This item requires the expenditure of fiscal year 2026 general funds in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright and Commissioner Brittany Thornton. Item twenty-two, a resolution approving a contract with Microsoft for enterprise-wide distribution of Microsoft 365 contract with vendor Insight Public Sector in a total amount not to exceed five hundred twenty-four thousand, two dollars and ninety-five cents, commencing upon execution through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods in an amount not to exceed five hundred twenty-four thousand, two dollars and ninety-five cents per renewal period for a total amount of one million, five hundred, seventy-two thousand, eight dollars and eighty-five cents. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2026 Sheriff's Office General Operating Funds in an amount not to exceed five hundred twenty-four thousand, two dollars and ninety-five cents, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright. Item twenty-three comes from the General Government Committee with Commissioner Brooks as Chair. Item twenty-three is a resolution approving the election of notaries public for appointment and/or reappointment for the Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item twenty-four is a resolution approving the county's mayor nomination of Brent Hooks for appointment to the Downtown Memphis Commission, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. Item twenty-five comes from the General Government Committee with Commissioner Mills, Acting Chair. Item twenty-five is a resolution requesting that Rise Memphis submit a report detailing the use and impact of funds awarded under Resolution Number Thirty-two, adopted June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, in accordance with the reporting requirements established therein, sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. Item twenty-six comes from the Core City Neighborhood and Housing Committee with Commissioner Brooks as Chairman. Item twenty-six is a resolution approving the sale of thirty county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County from various Shelby County tax sales to identify purchasers at various prices collectively totaling one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section sixty-seven dash five dash two five zero seven, and authorizing the Shelby County Mayor to execute quick claim deeds, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Morrison. A second by Commissioner Ford. Please prepare the screen for vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan, we have eleven eye votes.
The consent agenda passes. We'll now move to public comments, these are general comments. First is Joe Kent, each will have thirteen, three minutes to speak. If you could say your name and address for the record.
Sure. Joe Kent, 5111 Flamingo, still a conspiracy theorist, and still love Bigfoot. Congrats to many of you for your persistence on Wanda Howard. As you know, our local media has encouraged scrutiny of Howard with its non-ending coverage, and away from our elitist public rip-offs. But I believe your favorites in the punk families of Memphis, please, you build those relationships with the punk families of Memphis, because I have no such desire. Speaking of elitist public rip-offs, I will be covering in depth, you're not going to see this in the media anywhere, okay? We've got a hundred million dollar MLGW tree trimming rip-off going on right now, all right? We're gonna, we're looking for, you know, figure out how much, two hundred million dollars in Accelerate Memphis money, try to figure out where that money was spent, or going to be spent. And matter, which is, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but there is a public blackout. I mean, they don't have any, they're not having board meetings. The city council's not having transportation committee meetings. So, nobody knows what's going on. Now, the benefit, one benefit is, is that I hope, and I pray, that the FBI is in there, is what I hope, okay? And there's, somebody needs to go to jail for, you know, any, in any city that actually implodes their own transit system, somebody, and spends a bunch of money, somebody needs to go to jail, okay? As far as, sometimes I think consolidation is kind of coming, and I prefer consolidation, you know? Um, as far as, sometimes I think consolidation is kind of coming and, and I prefer consolidation, you know? Uh, but, and I don't know if it is or not, but the, the elitist will rip off that public government too if, unless you guys can discern when you're dealing with an, an elitist idiot or not. You know, for example, if somebody comes up to you, given the needs we have, and says, "Hey, we're gonna build a hundred-million-dollar elephant sanctuary," okay? You're dealing with an idiot. You're dealing with an absolute total idiot. So, I just want to put that on the radar and, um, sorry. Um, and I'm for this FY twenty-six realignment of the school board, um, to get everybody on the same election cycle. So, hope that passes. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Josh Spickler. If you state your name and address for the record.
I'm Josh Spickler. I'm the Executive Director at Just City, two forty Madison Avenue. Last night about seven-thirty, I got a telephone call. It was a friend of mine who I had recently celebrated the birth of a child with. We celebrated a brand-new job, a good government job that he'd gotten, but he was in jail last night at seven-thirty. Federal agents came to his house over the weekend to serve a state warrant. He'd been indicted by the DA's office in a case that was dismissed more than a year ago. Assistant DA filed the indictment again, or, or filed the indictment to start the case over again, requested a seventy-five-thousand-dollar bond, which was granted. He told me that overnight, the night before, Saturday night, when we were probably all out with our friends, I know I was, having a nice weekend evening, he stood in a nine-foot-by-five-foot cell with nine other men all night long. He stood in a nine-by-five-foot cell with nine other men all night long. I could hear it in his voice. I, I, I don't know what that is, if not torture. I don't know what that is, if not a story that we hear from overseas and are appalled by, but that's happening a block away in our jail. I mean, I could read to you the requirements of certification for that jail. I could read you standards from the American Correctional Association. I could read to you from Amnesty International. But I think we can all agree, when people, I have a photograph outside that I couldn't quite convince you all to let me bring in of the intake lobby, the waiting area of the jail where folks are meant to spend a few hours. There were two hundred and eighty-nine people in that space this morning. The photograph I, I have shows people standing around the walls, people in every single seat. You can see into the distance in the other area where people are sitting and standing. Folks are spending days and hours, the ones who don't get put into a tiny cell with nine other people to stand up all night. So, this is happening, obviously, because we have federal agents in, in town and they're making more arrests than we could have ever imagined. What are some of those things? A person was pulled over for having an air freshener hanging from his rearview mirror. A bicycle delivery driver was pulled over for not being in the bike lane. A person was approached for leaning out of a first-floor window. A person, uh, went over the stop line and partially blocked a crosswalk. Uh, this is not violent crime. They're sweeping people into our jail, shoving them into tiny cells, and they're standing up overnight for days and days and days on end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spickler. Next speaker is Laramie Wheeler. Miss Wheeler, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Laramie Wheeler. Uh, I am the Bail Fund and Advocacy Coordinator at Just City, two forty Madison Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero three. Uh, like I said, I am the Bail Fund Coordinator and every referral comes across my desk. Um, I have to look at, uh, the affidavits. I have to look at the bail screening forms. I have to look at everything when I am making these decisions on people's freedom. And I just wanted to bring you some of those stories. This is the recent price of freedom. Twenty-five-hundred dollars for stealing three bottles of Dawn dish soap. Seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for stealing tissue paper and a roll of paper towels. Fifteen-hundred dollars for stealing forty-one dollars' worth of food. Four-thousand dollars for stealing a bottle of vitamins and four pairs of reading glasses. And two-thousand dollars for a bag of jalapeno poppers and a bottle of cherry pure lemonade, which this person consumed inside of the store, and the original bond was twenty-thousand dollars for a bag of jalapeno poppers and lemonade. These are just a few in an overwhelming number of nonviolent offenses occurring in Shelby County. And you know what they tell me? That people are hungry. That people who are living in marginalized communities are being overpoliced, neglected, and that's on you. These are your constituents who needed you before they committed these crimes, who needed food before they committed this crime, who, who don't deserve to be punished for being hungry. That is a basic human right is accessibility, food accessibility, medical care, security of person. The opposite of poverty is not wealth. The opposite of poverty is justice, and you are failing. You are perpetuating poverty and you are allowing that jail to be filled with your constituents who needed you. They are sitting in chairs, sleeping on the floor, sleeping, sitting up, not eating, not showering, not getting their phone calls, or being pepper sprayed. When they try to get up from the chair, they're being pepper sprayed if they're on the phone too long. Tennessee Code forty-one four one oh nine, I've read these before. The jailers shall furnish adequate food and bedding. Forty-one four one eleven, the jailers shall enforce cleanliness in their respective jails. They shall provide bathing facilities, shall furnish hot and cold water, clean and sufficient bedding. The jailers shall keep the jails clean and shall remove all filth from each cell once every twenty-four hours. Forty, forty-one four one fifteen, the county legislative bodies, that's you, alone have the power and it is their duty to provide a medical care for all prisoners confined in the jail in their respective counties. Forty-one four one seventeen, a violation of any of the provisions of forty-one four one oh eight through forty-one four one sixteen, whether by the sheriff or by any selected jailer or guard by the sheriff, is a Class A misdemeanor. Your constituents need you. Pay attention.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. The next speaker is Andres Clark. Ar, Andres Clark. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Andres Clark, uh, twenty-one fifty-nine Clay. Uh, I'm on here behalf of the community of, uh, the veto of, um, uh, Mr. Lowry, um. I just wish that, uh, this do the right thing, man. It'd be like better for the community. A whole lot of turnouts for the, um, the community to be a better. I mean, the way the community is feeling is that we, the people, should be able to vote. We should be able to vote the, the, the board of education, just like we vote y'all in, right? And the way he just, Lee Harris, came and just took over and just, I mean, I have a mother-in-law in Cardova. She complains all day long about nothing's going on in Cardova. It ain't, you know, nothing is happening, no nothing. But, I mean, I'm just here to speak on the community part that, uh, I feel like we should be able to vote all at one time. Y'all have a blessed and wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next speaker is Mark Williams. Mark Williams. Okay, we'll go to... Uh, next speaker, Luke Se, Luke Seridge. Luke Seridge, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, Luke Savage, address is three two four eight Yale Avenue. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of Compass Community Schools. I'm currently the principal of Midtown, the old Memphis Catholic High School building. Um, and we have a, we have a safety issue happening in front of the building. Now, there is no good process for who to be able to contact, who to be able to get help from. And I feel as a principal of my own school that I am helpless because I have turned to different commissioners to be able to get help and have received none. I put down, I put together a list of times I've tried to be able to get in contact with someone to be able to get a crosswalk in front of my building in order to be able to keep my students safe. August eleventh, neighborhood complaints began. August twelfth, uh, City of Memphis Department of Engineering conversation started. They did a traffic study. They contacted a local precinct. Um, we reached out to Justin Carter in the beginning of September with the City of Memphis Department of Engineering. They observed traffic. They told us we needed a crosswalk. And it is now October twenty-seventh and still nothing has happened. And I'm just curious what it is going to take for me to be able to get a response from someone from the City of Memphis or some sort of help in front of my building? Because all of us care about the welfare of Memphians. And we should care about the four hundred students who are leaving my building every single day, who want to be able to leave safely, and it shouldn't take, God forbid, some sort of accident happening in front of my building for me to be able to get some sort of a response from the elected member that oversees my district or the elected member who oversees my school. I shouldn't have to be able to take time away from my family and my kids after I've worked the last twelve hours running a safe, efficient school to be able to come downtown to pay for parking in order to be able to get some help. So, two weeks ago, I had Justin Pearson in my building talking to my senior government students. And Justin Pearson said, "Sometimes one voice is all it takes in order for true change to be able to happen." And so, I'm standing here today with the encouragement of Justin Pearson, advocating on behalf of my school, my four hundred students, my families in order to be able to get some help in front of the building to keep my students safe. I think we can all agree that student safety is incredibly important. I put my contact number, uh, on that card. I would love to be able to receive a call or an email of what I need to be able to do in order to be able to get some actual help. Thank you.
Thank you. Last public speaker on general comments is Wei, AKA Philly. Um, if you could...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As a veteran who took an oath to uphold the Constitution, on October the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, around nine forty-five AM, I was denied entry and forced out of two oh one Popular Avenue by deputies who know who I was. I believe this was retaliation connected to an earlier accounting with the same deputy during early voting twenty twenty-four, where he and five other deputies obstructed my exit until I reminded them of the constitutional rights that I had to vote. Anyway, later on, on October the twenty-second, when I tried to file a formal complaint at ten eighty Madison Avenue, it was dismissed and ignored, even though video will show I had been assaulted by two officers of the court. That denial of accountability violated only, not only my dignity, but also my right to due process under the Fourteenth Amendment. I'm asking this commission to investigate these actions, to hold those responsible accountable, and to issue a formal apology for what occurred. I also ask that every deputy and courthouse officer receive continued education on the Bill of Rights because our freedoms mean nothing if those sworn to protect them don't understand or respect them. If these violations go unaddressed, citizens like myself are left with only one remedy, that protection guaranteed under forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three, which holds official liable for depriving any person of their constitutional rights under color of law. I'm not here for vengeance. I'm here for justice and accountability. Let's not forget about the DOJ report in which one of those stories mentioned is mine. So, justice begins when those in authority confront wrongdoing and make it right and ensure it never happens again, public servants. Thank you for your time, and I'll see you soon.
Paul Mathe, thank you. Paul Matheurn, if you could read item number six.
Item six, coming from the Budget and Finance Committee with Chairman Wayley. Item six is a resolution receiving and filing the August twenty twenty-five monthly comprehensive financial update reports and title Shelby County Government Monthly Commission Division Reports for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, sponsored by Commissioner Michael Wayley.
Have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, or second by Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Ford, you recognize?
And I know this came down with a favorable recommendation. Uh, good afternoon, Ms. Shawnbaum.
Good afternoon.
Before we even start, because I went back and listened to the tape, what is your official title right now?
Deputy Director Administration and Finance.
Okay. I didn't hear the deputy upstairs. I didn't know if there were some things that transpired in finance to where the deck was shuffled. I thought you were the number-one person for some reason because of us not getting our budget pa, uh, approved by the comptroller. I didn't know. That's why I had to ask because I listened to the tape.
Director Tipton is out on leave, so I'm standing in while she's out.
So, you're the interim number one?
Correct.
Okay, so I wasn't too far off. Let's go to page three. Page three, and I appreciate you, uh, giving us the August thirty-first, so at least we have a quarter now. I know that's just a small sample size, as I mentioned, uh, on Wednesday. But my question to you, basically, where we're at regarding revenue and where we're at regarding expenditures. There was a memo that came out, um, modifying what I would call a self-imposed governmental shutdown where the CAO has sent us a letter saying, uh, no purchasing between November to January fifteenth. Um, I just want to make sure that, um, government does not shut down because of things that have transpired where we dropped the ball. So, my question is, with what we have on page three with the total revenue and personnel expenditures, where we're at right now, do that have any effect on what we were given by the CAO stating that from November to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, there would essentially be, um, no hiring unless it's public safety, as well as, um, purchasing basically being shut down?
Danielle Shawnbaum, Deputy Director Administration and Finance. Uh, so, the government is not shutting down.
Okay, that's nice.
Um, we are in the middle of a system conversion with the go-live date at the beginning of January. So, there's a lot that has to be done in order to make that happen. So, the memo you received was around that conversion, had nothing to do with our cash flow position or in any other item, I would say there's, but I will be clear, the government is not shutting down.
So, there will still be resolutions in November that are approved by finance as well as in December approved by finance where those items will be in compliance with the CAO letter? But, um, you, you know where I'm going with this. And if I gotta get into the queue one more time to get the answer to that question, I think that's sort of important. I'm back in the queue, may I?
Recognize, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. So, I'm going back with the letter stated, and I'm looking at our revenues and our expenditures. So, my question is, will there, or are there any items coming up in November and December that have been approved by finance in order to go through their processes, including some things regarding purchasing and vendors? And I'm asking that because there are vendors that are asking because of the CAO's original letter, as well as the one that came out today, if they're going to get paid or not. And I don't think many of the vendors, and if the vendors are listening, you might want to inquire, uh, waiting three months before they receive any payment. So, to reiterate, are there items that finance, since you're the interim number one, are going to approve for November and December's agenda that deal with anything purchasing or vendor-related?
Danielle Shawnbaum, Deputy Director Administration and Finance. Um, so, government is going to continue to operate.
You said it already. You said it already. I just want to answer my question. Please.
It is possible that there are some delays in operations due to the conversion, but operations will continue.
So essentially, when we get our agenda on November and we see particular items, be ready, since you'll still be the interim number one, to explain if particular items on the agenda with where we're at as far as revenue and expenditures conflict with the CAO's, uh, letter, because I would be asking why? And I hope I don't get a, an answer that, um, conflicts with what has been brought to our attention. That's why a lot of the items that I brought were brought before the deadline, this self-imposed deadline. But I just want you to know, there'll be more questions that I'm going to be able to give to you and I'm going to ask you, I'm going to say, here's the memo, this is what you presented in front of us as item number six, and here's the agenda. So are we just going to do whatever the 11th floor is saying? Like what they want to do with another item that's coming up? Or are we just gonna go through the process and make sure that, uh, some of the things that are not necessarily illustrated in your presentation are taken care of? Again, this is a small sample size, but just like what one of my colleagues stated, we have a lot of policy that we need to put in place for the purposes of, let's just say hypothetically, you end up being the number one. We need to make sure for all the taxpayers out here that we don't get another ding from the comptroller, so the next mayor and the next commission have a raggedy budget that was given to them and we can't take care of regional one and two schools and all the business that people elected us to do. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you could prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. We have 11 eye votes.
That motion passes. Paumentarian, please read item number eight.
Chairwoman, item eight has a substitute, so once I read the item in, allow me to read the substitute into the record. Item eight comes from the Budget and Finance Committee with Chairman Whaley. Item eight is a resolution approving appropriation and expenditure of FY 2026 Capital Improvement Project Funds and approving a piggyback contract for the purchase of Newtonic NCI Pro Upgrade from Insight Public Sector Incorporated in an amount of $1,059,686.05 to commence upon execution through June 30th, 2025, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This item requires appropriation expenditure of FY 2026 Capital Improvement Funds in an amount not to exceed $1,059,686.05, sponsored by Commissioner Michael Whaley.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Whaley. Is there a motion to introduce the substitute?
I'll, I'll move the substitute.
I have a motion by Commissioner Whaley. Do you have a second? Second by Commissioner Lowry. Can we do that without objection? You could read the substitute into the record.
Item eight as substituted, resolution approving the appropriation and expenditure of FY 2026 Capital Improvement Project Funds and approving a piggyback contract for the purchase of Newtonic NCI Pro Upgrade from Insight Public Sector Incorporated in an amount of $1,059,686.05 to commence upon execution through April 30th, 2028. This item requires appropriation expenditure of FY 2026 Capital Improvement Funds in an amount not to exceed $1,059,686.05, sponsored by Commissioner Whaley.
Okay. Commissioner Whaley, could I have a committee report?
Uh, yes. This item came down with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Does everyone have the substitute in front of them at this time? Commissioner Bradford?
Well, we're waiting on the substitute to be handed out. Could the sponsor maybe, uh, explain what the substitute's about, just to speed the process up a little?
Yeah. Um, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is a technical change. They needed to include the contract date, which was April 30th, 2028. That's the only change.
I'll allow just, if there are any questions, if there are any Commissioners that would like to get in queue. Commissioner Brooks?
If the sponsor could, um, share with us the technical change he's referring to.
Yes, the date, April 30th, 2028, which is the contract date, was not in the original resolution.
Is that in one of your resolve clauses or where is this supposed to be?
Could you share where that, um, is located now in the resolution? Is it in the caption or?
Well, it's in the caption, um, and then it should also be in the body of the resolution.
Is that the only change?
That, to my knowledge, when I was told there was a substitute, they said they needed to add the contract date. I was not concerned.
Would the county attorney like to weigh in just so that we can clear this matter up?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office. That remains the only change and all the years are subject to funding. That language was also added to the resolution, but the date was the substantive change.
Okay. Commissioner Bradford?
I just, real quickly, uh, as per the permanent rules we've adopted, I don't think it's going to hold us up today, but when we change these, it's supposed to be in red to make sure all the Commissioners know what's changed from the previous version. So I'm kind of saying that for everybody sitting here, staff and everybody listening and playing along with the home game, we need to make sure it shows up in red. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bradford. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. We have 11 eyes and one abstain.
That motion passes. Paumentarian, please read item number 16. Sorry, my apologies, item 13.
Item 13 comes from the Public Works Committee with Chairman Bradford. Item 13 is a resolution approving agreement between Chevy County and Arlington Investment Group, LLC, to secure the public improvements to Amherst Plan Development Area 4 Phase 3 PD 08-306 CO and authorizing the recording of the plat when bonding procedure have been fulfilled. This item does not require expenditure of county operating funds, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford and Chairwoman Shante K. Avant.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bradford, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner, uh, is your presentation? Commissioner Brooks, you're recognized.
I pulled that item because I have some unreadiness on future funding on this particular item.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Bradford, Chairwoman Avant. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. We have 11 eyes and one abstain.
That motion passes. Paumentarian, please read item number 16.
Item 16 comes from the Hospital and Health Committee with Chairman Clay Bibbs. Item 16 is a resolution to approve a contract between Info Genie Incorporated and the Chevy County Government for medical staffing service to support Chevy County Health Department programs and clinical areas as needed in the positions of nurse practitioners, physician assistants, registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, and certified nursing assistants for the period beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This item requires expenditure of FY 2026 General Funds in an amount not to exceed $815,568, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Can I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Thornton? Commissioner Clay Bibbs, can I have a committee report?
This one came down with a favorable recommendation and I put this, uh, pulled it because this item will be pulled from being voted on today.
Okay. So you'd like to withdraw the item?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Clay Bibbs to withdraw the item. Can I get a second? Second by Commissioner, uh, Thornton. Can we do that without objection? All right, thank you. This item has been pulled. Paumentarian, if you could read item number 19.
Item 19 comes from the Law Enforcement Correction and Course Committee with Acting Chair Commissioner Mills. Item 19 is a resolution to approve a contract renewal of officers' uniform and physical training, PT gear apparel from MidSouth Solutions for Business on behalf of the Chevy County Sheriff's Office for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $865,990. This item requires an approval of the Board of Commissioners before exercising the two of two one-year renewal options. This item requires expenditure of fiscal year 2026 County General Funds in an amount not to exceed $865,990, sponsored by Commissioner Mick Wright.
I have a motion by Commissioner Thornton, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Commissioner Mills, can I get a committee report?
Yes, that item comes to us with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Is Chief Lindsay or someone from the Sheriff's Department here? Thank you, Chief. So I want to first say to the listening, um, audience and the public gathered today, we now have, um, data that once was present when we had MWBE tracking. It's back in the portal. So if you're ever looking, scroll to the bottom to see, um, how we are expending our dollars. We don't have a minority program that is active, but we are able to track local data. So thank you to, um, those persons that played a part in getting that back up and running for us. For this particular item, you mentioned in committee that it's going out for a bid?
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Thornton, this is a second and final renewal agreement of the contract that was executed in June of 20, I mean, in 2024. So yes, this item will go back out to bid after this contract is executed.
So walk us through the timeline for when it will go out for rebid. When will that be announced?
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. We have reached out to the purchasing department to initiate the SILBIT process now. So we're, we're working with them now to initiate the SILBIT.
So I would like to make a request that we unbundled the uniforms and the PT gear when we put this out for bid.
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. I would need to defer to the purchasing department as it relates to the rules and regulations of how items are bid, you know, whether they're being bid by the department or by the county commission.
Thank you. So if we could get purchasing to come down? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Commissioners James Gloss, Administrator Person.
Thank you, Administrator. What is the process of unbundling the uniforms and PT gear for this particular contract that is to go out for, um, its next bid?
James Gloss, Administrator Person. First, we would have to work, get with the department to understand what the scope of work is and also to ensure that there's no circumvention of the system to keep it below a certain threshold. So we have to give the department and make sure we're aligned with our policies and procedures.
Okay. So speaking to the department, what is the process of doing that? We just need some clarity. So it's been brought to my attention, um, that this particular bundling is, is boxing out local vendors from being able to bid on the contract. So this concept of breaking down contracts so that we can get increased participation, majority of the folks that I'm looking at in the audience, this is something that you should support. We have to make the process fair for small businesses here locally, a number of whom are going to be coincidentally minority businesses, but we're talking about local. There is a disenfranchisement in how it's bundled now and I would like to make a request that the uniforms and the PT gear are unbundled. So can we get from the department a commitment to do that?
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Thornton, as I've mentioned, we've already submitted the information to the purchasing department to initiate the SILBIT.
I'll get back in queue, Chair.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. I only have two questions. I do agree with my colleague, there are, um, small businesses that would love to, um, have business with the county. So my, my question is this, and y'all may have the same answer, y'all may have two different answers. So the reason why I'm asking this is because this is coming out of the Shelby County Sheriff's Office budget, one that, you, you, y'all know what's happened to your budget. That's why we got a lawsuit going on right now. My question is, is one of the reasons why this bundle exists and maybe subsequent bundles is because there is a cost savings in bundling? Even though it, I, I still agree with the request of my colleague, I'm looking as we go forward, with any bundles, including this one going forward, is it more for a cost savings or is there something else purchasing related that I'm missing out?
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Ford, when we submit the, uh, the bid or the SILBIT request, we're looking for a vendor that can provide both uniforms and whatever our recruits need in the process, you know, of their training. So it's just a matter of making sure that we can get these items timely. And also there is a price consideration. We want to make sure that we're being a good steward of taxpayer dollars so that we're getting the best possible price.
So, Mr. Gloss, do you agree with that assessment?
James Gloss, Administrator Person, Personnel Administrator, yes. I agree that that's what's looked at because as person, it's part of my job to do what's best, in the best interest of Chevy County Government and cost savings is one of those things that we look at.
Ms. Lindsay, through the chair, my last question. If this was unbundled, which we're already past that part, I, I'm going to support the item, how much of an increase would you forecast any, um, anything like this to be if, um, this was unbundled? Again, this doesn't take away from what my colleague is requesting because I believe that there are some, uh, businesses out there that could do the job, but I know we would have to go through a particular process, but just because it's the Sheriff's Office and I know that there is a multitude of things that have not been funded statutory or otherwise, does this basically free up some money to make up for some of the things that were not included in the Sheriff's budget? To where you have to do it this way in order to try to make up for some things like overtime and statutory items and things of that nature? The only reason why I'm bringing that up is because I wouldn't bring this up if it wasn't the Sheriff's Office, but because you all have a significantly large budget and it has been, uh... you all have a significantly large budget, and it has been compromised for the last three years. That's why I'm asking the question. That's all I have, if Ms. Lindsay can answer that.
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Ford, I'll try to answer your question. However, I just want to remind the body that the item before you today is the second renewal agreement, the second and final agreement of the contract that we have with MidSouth Solutions. As it relates to any upcoming CILB, I cannot answer a question regarding about how much it's going to cost or the projected cost savings, because that will depend on current pricing of items that we will receive from any vendor. So unfortunately, I cannot answer that question.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. So I want to make it clear that I'm supporting this item, but it's obvious to me that when we're setting up the next item, that these are decisions that are being made independent of the commission. We are going to, okay, the final contract is presented. We're not going to play a role in setting up what is going to be the next bid. So this is the most appropriate time to advocate, as the constituent has reached out to the district in office to do so. So I hear from the chief that it seems that the process has already moved forward. We haven't even confirmed the renewal. So we shouldn't be that far along that we cannot hear a firm commitment from the Sheriff's Office to unbundle this particular item. And so I just would like to know clarity from purchasing. Are we past the point of return to even unbundle the item, or is that something that we can make a request of today?
James, Gloss, Administrative Purchasing. First of all, this request will be for FY twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, before you enter, before you enter that, county attorney, I just want to make sure that we are staying within the purview of our role and responsibility and that the questions answered by the administration do not in any way harm the county towards possible litigation.
Yeah, Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office. The item before you is a fully negotiated contract with the terms published as they appear. At this point, there is no ability to unbundle this item without taking it back through the entire purchasing process. So again, this item appears before you in the way that it either needs to be approved or disapproved.
So not to unbundle this item, but we're talking about the new bid. We're not talking about this item. This item will be voted on accordingly. The request is for the next bid.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, so now that we're on the same page, are we past the point of no return for the next bid?
James, Gloss, Administrative Purchas- So the next bid, they submitted some information, but the FY twenty-seven budget isn't even approved. It's not approved yet. So we will still have time to have that discussion. Now, it depends on if it's in the best interest of Shelby County. To do so, I'll get with chief, and we can talk about it. So it's not too late.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that it's not too late. So back to the Sheriff's Department. Is there a willingness to entertain the opportunity to unbundle this item, understanding that we've heard from local vendors that the bundling of this item is actually the disenfranchisement?
Alicia Lindsay, Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Thor, now I'd be happy to take your concerns back to the sheriff and the chief deputy and see where we want to go from there. But it is my, my understanding that we have already started this process, because we don't want to get to the end of June thirtieth, 2026, and we don't have a contract in place. So it would be my recommendation that we move forward as we have.
Okay, so.
So that's what I will be recommending to the sheriff. I'll be more than happy to share your concerns with him, but I will make sure that I've already expressed my recommendation to him.
Okay. So Commissioner Thornton, you've already spoken twice on this item. All right, can we prepare the screen for a vote? Madam Clerk, could you please report the vote?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. We have ten eye votes.
That motion passes. Parliamentarian, if you could, read item number twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants with Chairman Commissioner Thornton. Item twenty-seven is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2026 operating budget in an amount of fifty thousand dollars to Feed the Need, to Feed the Needy, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of fifty thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr., Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs, Commissioner Amber Mills, Commissioner Brittany Thornton, and Commissioner Mikel Lowry, amended in October twenty-second, 2025 committee meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ford, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Commissioner Thornton, can I get a committee report? Commissioner Thornton? Commissioner Thornton, can I get a committee report?
This item comes down with favorable recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Whaley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to amend it by ten thousand.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Whaley, a second by Commissioner Bradford. Can we do that without objection, making the amount sixty thousand? Commissioner Caswell?
Yes, I'd like to move to amend it by ten thousand.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Caswell, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Can we do that without objection, making the grant seventy thousand? Commissioner Wright?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend by ten thousand.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Can we do that without recommendation, making the grant eighty thousand? Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. I see Ms. Banks at the well. I want to allow with my time, Ms. Banks, to articulate what she stated in committee as far as what the negative consequences were due to the fact that there were some changes and some other things that had to be made, just so that Feed the Needy could stay afloat to help all of our districts accordingly. So she can have my time on that, and I'd like to give it to her through the chair. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Rollin-Banks. I'm the chairman and CEO of Feed the Needy, PO Box 2067, Memphis, Tennessee. To the commissioners, Feed the Needy suffered a loss in funding. We had to cut eighteen hundred families for Easter. Coming through the door for Thanksgiving, there was another twelve hundred families that we had to cut for the same reason. Some of the agencies that you all have, they have contacted some of y'all to ask you to please support this organization, because I have received so many phone calls over the last past three and a half weeks. They are asking for to get on Feed the Needy roster, and I told them simply that we just cannot add anyone because of what we are facing. So my appeal to all of the commission who have not awarded or allocated any funds to Feed the Needy, I'm begging you this afternoon to please do so. And we certainly appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Commissioner Brooks?
I'd like to move to add ten thousand dollars, and, and my name is the sponsor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brooks to add, amend by ten thousand, making the grant ninety thousand, as well as add as a co-sponsor, a second by Commissioner Bradford. Can we do that without objection? Okay. I'd like to also make amendment and amend by ten thousand, making it at one hundred thousand. I have my motion, and then a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Can we do that without objection? All right. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote for one hundred thousand dollars to Feed the Needy, a charitable organization.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. We have eleven eye votes.
That motion passes. Parliamentarian, please read item number twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight comes from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants with Chairman Thornton. Item twenty-eight is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2026 operating budget in an amount of one hundred thousand dollars to Shelby County Sheriff's Office, a governmental entity. This item requires an expenditure of one hundred thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Commissioner Edmund Ford Jr. and Commissioner Amber Mills.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, can I have a committee report?
This item comes down with favorable recommendation.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend by ten thousand.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wright, a second by Commissioner Bradford, to amend by ten thousand, making the grant one hundred and ten thousand. We do that without objection. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. For those that are in the audience regarding this item, I would ask to let any commissioner, you can, but specifically one of us or Commissioner Wright regarding this item on what the overall expenditure is going to be for the purposes of putting this as a budget amendment, when we get to that particular part of the process in May and June, because this is something that we need to make sure that we have. And it is a privilege to be part of putting this, what is it, mounted, thank you, mount, mounting unit together. So I guess, Commissioner Wright, we can get a horse with what you brought, but we'll make it happen. So thank you very much. But as soon as you find out what the expenditure is, let's make sure that we put that as a budget amendment going forward as the interim number one, Ms. Chambon, wherever she went, stated on record. So it's great to be part of this process and this new addition. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please record, report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. We have twelve eye votes.
That motion passes. Parliamentarian, please read item number twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY 2026 operating budget in an amount of fifty-one thousand to New Memphis Institute, a charitable organization. This item requires expenditure of fifty-one thousand dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Fund, sponsored by Chairwoman Shante K. Avant, Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs, Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr., Commissioner Michael Whaley, and Commissioner Mikel Lowry. Item was amended in October twenty-second, 2025 committee meeting.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford. I have a second by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, can I get a committee report?
This item comes down with favorable recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner, Vice Chair Bradford?
I'd like to add an additional five thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bradford, a second by Commissioner Whaley. Can we do that without objection, making our grant fifty-six thousand, making the grant fifty-six thousand? Commissioner Whaley?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Just as I've done in the past, want to disclose that my employer has a partnership with New Memphis separate from this grant, but there's no personal benefit, so I can vote on the item.
Thank you, Commissioner Whaley. Commissioner Caswell?
Yes, I want to add five thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Caswell, a second by Vice Chair Bradford, making the grant fifty, sixty-one thousand. Do that without objection? All right. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Just for the record, this is, item twenty-nine has been amended to sixty-one thousand to New Memphis Institute, a charitable organization. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Wright, Thornton, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avant. Commissioners Ford and Brooks have abstained. I have eight eyes and two abstained.
That motion passes.
One of personal privilege.
Commissioner Ford?
Very quickly, before we go to the regular agenda, Madam Chair, and Ms. Smith, we talked about this a little bit, and I think I need to state this on the record before we continue. So we did have one item that was on the consent agenda, and it passed. It wasn't pulled or whatnot regarding the organization. And I stated on record on Wednesday that this should not be a controversial item. However, there is some information I need to state on the record. Some things have transpired, and I would say that any question needs to be raised when an organization that is asked to submit a simple report lawyers up. Number two, the attorney that was retained has an array of conflicts. I will share that with you. I would ask the county attorney, through her due diligence, to make sure that none of those funds go to pay the legal fees for this organization, much less the individual who has conflicts. And there are enough documents that I plan on showing you that show the legislative intent for at least some of those initiatives within their report to be implemented. Clerk Jones is here. I'm not going to ask him to come up, but there are enough documents and emails and correspondences that state that there is a legislative intent regarding one of those things that we addressed. He has information as well. To make this very clear, those relationships need to be renewed in order to make sure that we can move on from this particular item, and let's do so. And I trust you, Ms. Smith, to do your due diligence, because it would be bad after, if we come up with results that require a task force or some red tide people to get involved. If they do, I know exactly where they need to start. I call the order of the day.
Commissioner Ford, thank you. We will now move to the regular agenda. Parliamentarian, please read item number thirty.
Item thirty is coming from the General Government Committee with Chairman Brooks. Item thirty is a resolution appointing blank to serve as a judicial commissioner for a four-year term, sponsored by Chairman K, Chairman Shante K. Avant, sent down with our recommendation in October twenty-second, 2025 committee meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, and a second by Commissioner Mills. I'll now allow the parliamentarian, parliamentarian to read the rules and how the vote will go, first nomination and then vote for the judicial commissioner term.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Commissioner Wright?
I'd like to make a motion that we dispense with the rules.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Wright, and a second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner, Commissioner Mills, to suspend the rules, and that will be for us not to have to listen, not to have those folks speak, because they did speak in committee. Each of the candidates prepared a speech. It had ample time during general government to make a presentation about their qualifications for the role. That is for the record, without objection. We'll move forward. Parliamentarian, if you could read the rules.
Madam Chair, that was my motion to dispense with the reading of the rules. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I, well, I think the reading of the rules is just to share with this body. I'm sorry. I thought your, your motion to suspend was for us not to have, not to listen to the presentations again. But the reading of the rules is just the sharing for the body.
Well, our fill-in parliamentarian may be very excited to read the rules. I don't know if she's had a chance to do that, but we've heard these rules many times, maybe twelve times.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay. So again, I'm, I will make, acknowledge the motion. Are we okay with the motion, as I stated it before, and then in amending that, also to suspend the rules and not having to read the rules? Is that correct? Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Wright, and a second by Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Mills, are you still the second on that? Okay. All right, we're doing that without objection. All right. Yes, the first nomination comes from, okay, your parliament clerk, you could.
Commissioner Whaley?
I'll nominate Ernest Brooks.
Mills?
I'll nominate Laura Fowler.
Bradford?
I'll nominate Carla Taylor.
Commissioner Wright?
Commissioner Wright?
I pass.
Morrison?
Pass, no new nomination.
Caswell?
No new nominee, nominations.
Commissioner Brooks?
No, no nominations.
Lowry? Ford? Thornton?
No new nominations.
Clay Bibbs?
No new nominations.
Chairwoman Avant?
No new nominations. Commissioner Wright, I just want to come back to you. It was a pass. Do you have any new nominations? Okay. All right. Okay, and for the vote. Nominations are closed. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks?
Mills?
Fowler?
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Fowler.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Commissioner Brooks?
Fowler.
Lowry? Ford?
Ernest Brooks.
Thornton?
Taylor.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
I have four for Brooks, three for Fowler, and four for Taylor.
Okay, with that result, everyone goes to a second round of votes.
Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks.
Mills?
Fowler?
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Fowler.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Brooks?
Fowler.
Lowry? Ford?
Brooks.
Thornton?
Taylor.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
I have four for Brooks, three for Fowler, and four for Taylor.
Okay, so with round three, the two nominees would be Brooks and Taylor that we are now voting on.
Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks.
Mills?
Taylor.
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Taylor.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Brooks?
Taylor.
Ford?
Ernest Brooks.
Thornton?
Brooks.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
I have five for Brooks and five for Taylor.
All right.
She has six for Taylor.
Colleagues, my apologies, we're going to do the, this last round of vote with the two candidates once more.
I apologize because I had the wrong numbers.
We don't want, yes, we want to make sure we have clear, so we'll do this again. One more round.
Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks.
Mills?
Taylor.
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Taylor.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Brooks?
Taylor.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I can, Taylor. Okay, thank you. Lowry's not here. Ford?
Brooks.
Thornton?
Brooks.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three. Okay, I have six for Taylor and five for Brooks.
All right, so the, Ms. Taylor would now be our new, our new judicial commissioner.
What, 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 hold on, whoa, 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 we got to have seven, I believe. I don't want to be premature. Uh-uh. You got to have seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you for the correction. My apology. So we have to do another round of votes.
So Madam Chair, to try to expedite, may I?
Just a moment, please.
Sure.
Okay, if we can get a motion to suspend the rules in order to do another round of voting.
That was part of what I was going to do. I would move to suspend the rule for the purposes of starting the process again.
Commissioner Ford made a motion, second by Commissioner Caswell. All right, here we go. La- we'll do another round of voting.
Commissioner Whaley?
Commissioner Ford?
Madam Chair, would it be feasible to make a motion to basically, instead of all thirteen of us doing the no new nomination and whatnot, can we do a motion just to have all three back in at one lick? Or do we have to go through that process again?
If your motion is to include all three candidates, you can make that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Thornton. So we'll begin the nomination process again. Commissioner Whaley?
Yep, nominate Brooks.
Commissioner Mills?
Taylor.
Bradford?
No new nomination.
Wright?
No new nomination.
Morrison?
No new nomination.
Caswell?
Brooks. No, 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 no new nomination.
Commissioner Brooks?
I'd like to nominate Laura Fowler.
Lowry?
Everyone's nominated. No new nominations.
Ford?
I got a point of order. I, I thought we were putting all three. We're doing nominations. So wh- where are we at?
We're putting back the nominations in the queue. There may not have been anyone who wanted all three, so we're doing a nomination round process. So we now have all three candidates in.
Are all three? Who nominated Brooks? That's what I want to know.
Commissioner Whaley?
So all three are in?
They are.
I pass.
Thornton?
No new nominations.
Clay Bibbs?
No new nominations.
Chairwoman Avant?
No new nominations.
Our nominees are Taylor, Fowler, and Brooks. Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks.
Mills?
Taylor.
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Taylor.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Brooks?
Fowler.
Lowry?
Brooks.
Ford?
Brooks.
Thornton?
Brooks.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
Brooks.
All right, so we have those that were two or more vo- votes, so that would be Brooks and Taylor that we will now be voting on.
Commissioner, Commissioner Whaley?
Brooks.
Mills?
Taylor.
Bradford?
Taylor.
Wright?
Taylor.
Morrison?
Taylor.
Caswell?
Brooks.
Brooks?
Taylor.
Lowry?
Brooks.
Ford?
Brooks.
Thornton?
Taylor.
Clay Bibbs?
Taylor.
Chairwoman Avant?
Brooks.
Madam Chair, if Taylor has seven, I'd like to change my vote to Taylor.
Please amend Commissioner Ford's vote to Taylor. Okay, so that will be eight for Taylor and?
Five for Brooks.
And five for Brooks.
Well, I'm sorry, four for Brooks.
Four for Brooks. All right, that's official, seven votes or more. Okay, officially, Ms. Taylor is now our next judicial commissioner.
Oh, Madam Chair, I was in, I'm in the queue for you.
Ms. Taylor, if you'd like to come down and say a few words.
Thank you, Commission. Thank you.
Just if you had a few words that you wanted to say?
Thank you all for your vote. I promise to do well by the citizens of Shelby County. That's my theme music. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, so now we'll be voting on the resolution appointing. We'll now be, we'll be filling in the resolution appointing Ms. Taylor to serve as judicial commissioner for a four-year term, sponsored by Chairwoman Shontae K. Avant. If we could, prepare the screens for a vote. Can we do that, can we do that by acclamation? Okay, a motion by myself and then by, by second by Commissioner Ford. Can we do that by acclamation? So moved. All right, colleagues, in light of the other items that we have, we're going to now, I'm going to now move, item to read, item number, item number thirty, item number forty-one, because there are so many public comments, I want to make sure that we give people an opportunity to speak on the item. Parliamentarian, please read item forty-one.
Item forty-one comes from the General Government Committee with Acting Chair Commissioner Amber Mills. Item forty-one is a resolution overriding the county mayor's veto of item number nineteen entitled, Resolution Aligning the Elections of the Shelby County Board of Education with the Shelby County Board of Commissioners pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section forty-nine dash two dash two zero one F, which was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton. This item was sent down with our recommendation in October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five committee meeting.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Ford. All right, we will now move to public comments. The first, Dr. Jeanette Stokes. And just want to state, because we have more than twenty-plus public comments cards, each speaker will have one minute to speak. First speaker is Dr. Jeanette Stokes.
Dr. Jeanette Stokes, would you need my address? Sixty-two, sixty-three Poplar Avenue, Memphis, three-eight-one-one-nine. All right, Chair, Chairpersons and members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My forefathers fought and sacrificed so that I could participate in the democratic part, process. I exercised that right when I voted for my school board member, and I expect that the will of the voters to be respected so that the person who we chose may serve the full four-year term. No individual or body should have the authority to sup- to suppress a vote or silence a community's voice. While I am not opposed to realigning terms, to do it now and remove the five newly elected commissioners is a disruption to the education of our students, our school district, and democracy. We do in fact live in a democracy, and the voice of each voter must remain central to the decisions about the public schools. I ask that you vote no to overriding the mayor's veto. Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening, and I'll end with this. John Lewis, he said, "The vote is precious, is almost sacred."
Thank you, Ms. Stokes.
"It is the most powerful nonviolent tool we have in our democracy."
Thank you, Ms. Stokes.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luke Campbell.
Hi, Luke Campbell, two-three-six-five Kirby Road, three-eight-one-one-nine. Ladies and gentlemen of the Shelby County Commission, right now, too many dreams held by parents and children are shattered by a heartbreaking reality. Literacy rates in Memphis Shelby County schools are hovering at twenty-five percent proficiency overall, with only about twenty-nine percent of third graders reading at grade level. These aren't just numbers, they're stolen futures, children left behind in a system that's failing them every single day. Our kids and our families in Shelby County deserve so much better. Commissioners, please join me and feel the urgency. Our kids aren't pawns in politics, they're our community's future. Override the veto and give the people their voice. Let's end the cycles of failure and build a legacy where every children, child reads with confidence and therefore dreams without limits. For their futures, for ours, let's unite together, put our kids' education first, and override the veto. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. So just remember, in order for acknowledgement of your support, it's either a thumbs up or a thumbs down, so that everyone who is listening in can also hear. Andrea Bell is our next speaker.
Andrea Bell. Fifty-one forty-five Bridge Mill Lane, District Twelve. Hi, I'm here as a parent. I have children here today because I want them to be part of this momentum. This is historic. You're talking about something that hasn't happened here in Shelby County, period. We need education equality for our children. And what does that mean? That means opportunities. We can't have opportunities for our children if they can't read. We can't have opportunities for our society, our Memphis society, if our children cannot read. We all, we're talking about abridgment of terms. Let's think about impeachment. What does that mean? That is the highest level of abridging the term of a political official. It's our prerogative to abridge the terms of those who are not doing what they need to do. So please veto the mayor's veto, so everyone can go back on the election for twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card we have is John Carroll.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I come to support not overriding the veto. I do not, I support a reform at the school board level. I support a changeover at the school board, but I believe we should have a proper recall provision to do this, and I don't believe this is the proper way to do it. Therefore, I ask for your support in not overriding the veto. Thank you.
And Mr. Carroll, for the record, if you'll just state your address.
Sure, sorry. John Carroll, three-seven-five-seven Kearney Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee.
Thank you. Alright, next card we have is Judy Brown. And again, if you'll state your name and then address on the record when you get up here.
Good afternoon, my name is Judy Jackson Brown, five-six-seven-two Tulip Hill Drive, Barlet, Tennessee, three-eight-one-three-five. I'm gonna offer my condolences to Commissioner Lowry in the homegoing of your father. I'm here in favor of overriding Mayor Harris's veto. The state law now authorized the realignment so that families, and like I said the last time I was here, my mom, senior citizens can vote on everything at once and save money. Because our cities are already in financial distress, why have two elections when you can have one election and everybody can vote on everything at one time? The school board has been very financially irresponsible with the money. We can save money by having one election. We've had two superintendent searches, four interim superintendents, and a former superintendent having to be paid because of a bad decision that was made to put the interim in, and it is interim, when they could have just hired him in the first place because he was in the running, but they chose not to, and so now they didn't, so now we're in this. They have spent money on the interim superintendent's wife for fourteen students. All that money going to fourteen students, and then?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
They tried to help.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
The superintendent, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Smallwood.
Good evening, good evening. Stefan Smallwood, seven-six-eight-seven Goshbrook Lane, three-eight-one-two-five. Our MSCS Safety Special Project Coordinators and School Resource Officers are doing incredible work to keep our schools and communities safe. We are, we not only focus on prevention, but also intervention. Building trust and meaningful relationships with students and parents is our goal. Our efforts include engaging intervention, mentoring, hosting community outreach events, providing safety education, and working closely with school staff to identify and support students that may be at risk. The Department of Safety and Security beyond expectations, making a difference through early engagement, mentorship, apprenticeship, partnerships with families, educators to create safer and more supportive learning environments. I also want to recognize that personally, I have worked and had the opportunity to collaborate with District Four and District Five Commissioners. They are doing a great job, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Chantel Hest Taylor.
Greetings, Dr. Chantel Hest Taylor, ninety-three thirty-three Chimney Rock Boulevard, Cordova, Tennessee. As a parent and teacher, I urge you to stand with County Mayor Harris and support the veto of item nineteen. In this democracy of the United States, to remove officials who have been fairly elected by the citizens sets an unwanted negative precedent. Simply, let's not overturn these elections. Instead, I ask you to trust democracy to play out, allow the school board members to answer to their constituents during their next elections. Once again, Commissioners, I implore you to vote no to overriding Mayor Harris's veto of item number nineteen. This is not a plea for the school board, but a cry for democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Cynthia Grayson. Ms. Cynthia Grayson?
Cynthia Grayson. Six-two-six-three Poplar Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-nine. Commissioners, thank you in giving me the this moment. I stand before you today, asking you to uphold the county mayor's veto, not for politics, but for our students, our school, and our future. This veto is about protecting the resources that keep our classrooms open, our teachers' supported, and our children learning. If this veto is overturned, it will do more than cut budgets. It would silence the voices of families and educators who work every day to lift our students higher. When we talk about equity and opportunity, we cannot ignore the blocking of this veto would be a form of voter suppression, denying our community the power to decide what is best for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson.
Please stand with us and beside us for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson. Next speaker is Liz Marable.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Liz Marable, sixty-six sixty-seven Poplar Pike, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-nine. I'm a lifelong Memphian, proud graduate of Ridgeway High School, and a mathematics teacher since nineteen eighty-three, and I have the privilege of serving as the President of the United Education Association of Shelby County. I urge you to uphold the county mayor's veto. This is not a partisan issue. It's voters' rights, it's a public school issue, it's a student issue. You are risking silencing the very voters we spent encouraging to believe their votes matter. Every ballot cast is a ballot cast by a registered voter, and no one should have the right to cancel their vote except for them. We must remember, the right to vote was not easily won. African-American men gained that right in eighteen seventy, women followed in nineteen twenty, and it wasn't until the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five that that all became legal, four years after I was born. We have already seen what the Achievement School District did to thirty-three schools. It was a dismal failure. It stripped communities of voice, accountability, and our students paid the price. We cannot and must not allow repeat of that mistake
Thank you.
in Shelby County.
Thank you, Ms. Marable.
Stand for students, stand for public education.
Thank you, Ms. Marable. Our next speaker is Cheryl Piggy Cright.
Cheryl Piggy Cright, eight-fifty-six Thaksin, District Eight. Good afternoon, Shelby County Commissioner. Thank you for offering yourself for public service. I do understand that this is a tedious job, and I applaud you for stepping up. We elected you to make the best decisions for our community. We elected the Memphis Shelby County School Board to make the best decisions for our community. Somewhere along the way, there was a disconnect. The decisions of late have not been reflective of what has been best for our community. Truth be told, both governing bodies have made jacked-up decisions. Truth be told, oh, I didn't want to say that, but it is what it is. Truth be told, I want some of the Memphis Shelby County School Board members gone yesterday, as a matter of fact, some of you too. However, this is what we got. To usurp the voting power of the people is not what Fannie Lou Hamer fought for, nor John Lewis with the Voting Rights Act, especially with a body that were not even
Thank you.
seated and in ethics commission.
Thank you, Ms. Cright.
Respectfully, remove your minds
Thank you, Ms. Cright.
and personalities from Memphis
Thank you, Ms. Cright.
and do what is right for the whole
Thank you, Ms. Cright.
Thank you.
Miranda Erk?
Hello, my name is Miranda Erk, and my address is twenty-seven twenty-seven North Cape Bond Road. I support overriding the veto. I am in favor of elections for the school board being aligned to elections for the city and county councils, as it is in major cities across the U.S. And having elections for the city and county councils with the school board elections will ensure more voter turnout and our families' voices being heard. I appreciate the authority you all carry to represent the true desires of the students and families in the district. By overriding this veto, you are able to use your authority and voice for the betterment of children. I know there is not an ideal time or an ultimately convenient time to do this change, but we are counting on you to ultimately make the right choice now. Now is always the right time to make the right choice, and if we keep pushing it off, our children could suffer.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kamario Brown. Kamario Brown? Okay, our next speaker, Chelsea Trailer.
Hello, Chelsea Trailer, three-eight-one-one-five. I'm a proud member of this community and engage, and an engaged participant in its growth. Education is the cornerstone of our success, is the most important issue guiding my involvement and my vote. I believe that by focusing our efforts on improving education, we lay a stronger foundation for every other goal our community holds dear. I'm asking you to join me in not supporting the same old narrative, let's craft a new narrative, one that centers student achievement, equitable access, and good outcomes. We owe our children nothing less than fresh thinking and real collaboration with educators and families. This vote before us is historic. It's an opportunity to veto the county mayor and redirect energy towards educational excellence and responsible governance. Let's use this moment to demonstrate our commitment to the next generation. Finally, a good step governance is to put all, put all the school board seats up for reelection in twenty twenty-six. It's time for renewed leadership and renewed trust
Thank you, Ms. Trailer. Our next speaker, Shandra Gatewood.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good to state your, your address as well. Thank you.
I'm Shandra Gatewood, fourteen-eighty-one Hester Avenue, three-eight-one-one-six. Good evening, Commissioners. I am a proud graduate of Whitehaven High School and a professional school counselor. Every day, I see the students that we serve with the emotional struggles, the stress they carry, and then anxiety and uncertainty of each day. These are real challenges that affect their ability to learn and thrive. What happens in this chamber this evening directly impacts the well-being of our students. This is why I urge you to uphold the county mayor's decision to veto. This is a mental health issue. Every child deserves stability. Every child deserves support, and every child deserves the guidance of educators who truly care for them, love them, and will fight for them every single day. The mental health clinicians, counselors, and educators in this district are more than teachers. We are mentors, advocates, and safe havens
Thank you, Ms. Gatewood. for our students.
Please uphold that veto.
Our next speaker, Charles Lampkin.
Good afternoon, Charles Lampkin, thirty-seven-eleven Austin P. Highway, Memphis, three-eight-one-two-eight. Good afternoon, everyone. We have a difficult task ahead of us. We have to do what's right for the children. We have to do what's right for the people that have voted for you, and then voted for those that are on the Memphis Shelby County School Board. This is nothing personal. This is a take-back of the power for the people. Give them the opportunity to vote if they are supposed to be there. This second opportunity will give them that. The governor has already aligned these elections. He's already spoken to the issue of term limits. Now let's do the right thing and honor that, have integrity, stand up. Don't vote absent, present, not absent. Stand up, be a man, or woman, in this case. But at the end of the day, you will be judged for your torts. The word speaks clearly to that. So take that one up with God.
Thank you, Ms. Lampkin.
I suggest you use caution and do what's right.
Our next speaker, Noah Nordstrom. Our next speaker, Noah Nordstrom.
Hi, my name is Noah Nordstrom, 1978 Southern Avenue in Memphis. And I'm here to support the override. And frankly, because it seems like most people up here have forgotten about what's most important, which is the kids. Democrats, I want to address you guys for a second. We have to be honest with ourselves. I am one too. This failing state of our schools is on us, and we can't just keep saying it's because of poverty. It's because of poverty. Yes, that has an effect, but kids in poverty can also learn, and we have a responsibility to make the best education system possible here in Memphis Shelby County. And I also want to address the Republicans here, because what your party is doing right now to our city is frankly terrorism. I have students that won't show up to school anymore because they're so afraid. I have students in my first period who can't come to my first period anymore because they're the only one in their family who can drive their siblings to school because everyone else is afraid of being taken by ICE. So I advise you all to lay down your political agendas and actually put the kids first. Let us have a vote. Let us improve our school system and stop supporting ICE occupation in our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mildred Taylor.
Good evening. I am Mildred Lee Taylor. I reside at 623 Poplar Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38119. I am here to say that the voters have already... They spoke in 2024 when five school board members were up for reelection, and four of them lost their positions. And so the voters have spoken. So why should these people have to come back and run again in 2026? I am urging you to vote no against the mayor's veto. Personally, when I look around at the members of the people who are on the county commission, it hurts and breaks my heart because I was one of those children who watched my grandparents stand in line to register to vote. When I look around and think about those of you who are trying to suppress people's votes, I am so disappointed in you. So I ask you to vote no on overriding the veto of Mayor Harris. Please do that. Don't suppress our votes. Don't make those people who just won the election in 2024 have to run again. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Our next speaker, Breonna Scott.
Breonna Scott, 6120 Brexton Lane, 38115. Good evening, Commissioners and fellow residents. I'm a proud, active member of this community, and I'm here tonight because education is what helps us move forward. There are many important issues that deserve our attention, but education stands at the center of everything we do for our children, our families, and our future. I'm asking you to join me in a collective effort. Let's work together to improve education for every student. Let's move beyond old narratives and create a new one, one built on collaboration, transparency, and measurable progress. We deserve a plan that brings teachers, parents, and students to the table, listening to their experiences and acting on them. What you're considering today is historic. It's a moment to reflect on where we've been and to vote with courage for where we want to go. I'm urging you to vote in a way that supports our schools, our educators, and our children's bright futures. Additionally, I support a critical step for accountability and renewal, placing our school board seats up for reelection in 2026. This ensures renewed energy, fresh perspectives.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anita Thai.
Hello, my name is Anita Thai. I live at 3246 Shannon Circle in 38118. Please be in agreement with the citizens for the children that y'all override the Mayor Lee Harris veto. Please... Let's vote in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Damon Curry Morris.
Damon Curry Morris, 1529 Dunmore Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 38114. I think we're missing the message here, Commissioners. While all these people are standing behind you, telling you how great Lee Harris is, let me remind you of him freezing funds for District 10 that while a lot of that money was allocated to go to the schools in those districts. So I need somebody to speak on that, okay? And let's talk about, in what it says in Matthew, Chapter 12, verse 22, where it says about a house divided. When a board member of the UEA reached out to me and said they did not support, and they weren't even invited to the meeting. See, we got to get our own house in order before we talk about what a democracy is. You can't pick democracy apart. It's all-inclusive. And tonight, you all are charged with a decision, or else the state gonna make their decision for us.
Our next speaker, Notoria Carpenter.
Can I just want the committee to give me an extra minute? Because I'm at a vote, give me an extra minute.
So move. I may up if we give a vote.
So I'm going to ask that all the Commissioners respect the process because there are so many people that have asked to speak. Otherwise, we would have...
But I'm saying they did it before. That's why I'm asking.
We would have needed to do that for every... So I'm going to ask that everyone respects the process. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. One minute.
Okay, Notoria Carpenter, 1637 Britson. Let's be clear. This does not silence the voters. In fact, it does the opposite. It puts the power back in the hands of the people where it belongs. The communities there is fair, efficient elections that repossess everyone, not politics tactics, but for confusion to divide us. We want to be able to vote for our leaders when it makes sense. And if voters want to reelect current members, they can. If not, they can choose new leadership. That's democracy. Let's override Mayor Lee Harris veto because let's call that unconstitutional. Also, then the county Commissioners vote aligned the election, so he disenfranchising y'all's votes. Let's do right. And I'm expecting everybody to do right. If you want the community to stand with you, you need to stand with the community and do right.
Our next speaker, thumbs up or thumbs down? Our next speaker is Latasha Griggs.
Latasha Griggs, 1095 Bama. My question to you all is, what was Lee Harris saying when all this stuff started going on with this board of education? Where was he at? He sat his... Over in the corner, and he had nothing to say. He didn't do nothing. He ain't doing nothing. So I'm trying to understand, where did he... How was he even able to come in and have a voice in this? First of all, and this boy, they bout his crooked as third street. They are, you know, we got a vice chair that didn't do nothing when she was chair. She done censored the lady with the wigs on. She didn't do nothing to her. Then we got a chair now who didn't do nothing for her district when she had a district. Make it make sense. But yet, all I want to say is, what about us? What about the people that pay everybody salary? They're taxpayers. What about us? We don't have a voice? We don't mean nothing? Where we come in at? They just want to take everything from us so somebody can line their pockets?
Thank you, Ms. Griggs.
And they none pockets. That's what they doing. They lining their pockets and stuff. They tried to prosecute you, but they got skeletons in their closet. You up.
Next speaker is Lisa Arnold.
Hello, Lisa Arnold, 4544 Given Avenue. Thanks for having us out tonight. I wanted to say that by overriding the veto, you're teaching our students how the separation of powers in this country and this county works. We have an executive, our mayor, but you are the legislative branch and have the ability to override our executive's veto. By overriding this veto, you are asserting your authority. You are supporting the people, and you are supporting the parents who are crying out for help. Our children deserve better. Our parents deserve better. And this bipartisan legislation and this bipartisan resolution will bring our community together to fix our schools and give a voice to the residents. Thank you.
Next speaker, Anthony War.
Anthony War. What I don't understand, this is what I don't understand.
Mr. War, can you state your name and your address? Your name and address for the record, please.
Anthony War, W A R R, 3650 West Big Bend.
Thank you.
What I don't understand, somebody said on the news that they was the chosen one. If they so chosen, let us choose and we put her back in. I don't understand why it's so hard, why we dealing with this here continuing. Because my whole picture on this is, we need one vote, one person to do the right thing because we already had seven. So we need that one person to stand up, be a man or be a woman. Matter of fact, I want y'all to let Lee Harris know this here. Quit getting on TV and acting like a woman. I'm sick of him. I'm sick of whining. I'm sick of Lee Harris. Lee Harris haven't done anything since he been in office, but tried to quit one to have her out of office. That's the only thing Lee Harris have done.
Thank you, Mr. War.
And he didn't succeed in that.
Thank you, Mr. War.
But I'm watching who gonna vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. War.
I want y'all to know that.
Thank you, Mr. War.
Do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. War. Our next speaker is Willie Simon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and esteemed Commissioners. My name is Willie Simon, 1112 Falls Springs Road, Caryville, Tennessee, 38017. I come to you today to tell you, we talked a lot about education. And when we talk about education for our children, one of the most things that we need to teach our children is integrity. And we had an opportunity back in 2024 to vote, and those voters went out expecting integrity of our elections. Those folks went out and woke up early in the morning, gathered their children together, took them to school, and they went out and they voted for the people that they felt like should represent them on the school board and every other race that was on 2024. What I'm saying to you today is to honor that. The way we teach our children is to hold up to our word, not just when it makes us feel good, not just when we agree with it all the time, but let's hold up to our word. Our democracy can't stand when we're fickle. Our democracy can't stand when we're just sitting around watching for the next hottest thing to jump on. We need to make sure that we don't put targets on our back just disregarding democracy in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Next speaker is LaShonta Rudd.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. 1200 Davis Street, Memphis, Tennessee. My name is LaShonta Rudd. On yesterday at 3:22 afternoon, I sent you guys an email, all of you. And my ask was that you override the veto. And the reason why I want you to override the veto because I live in District 10. And during the 2024 election, my board member is Joyce Coleman. Joyce Coleman was not on my ballot because her term ends next year. However, somebody else was on my ballot that was not supposed to be on the ballot. This same person is now under investigation for address fraud. Override the veto.
Our next speaker is Neemaya Hardaway.
At this time, Deputy Sheriff, I'm sorry. The Sheriff. I'm going to ask the Sheriff. Sheriff. At this time... At this time, I'm going to ask that you clear the chamber for the vote. At this time, Deputy Sheriff asks you to clear the chamber. You have to clear the chamber.
Good evening to everyone.
No, Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Hardaway, Mr. Hardaway.
You want me to wait?
Yeah, I want them to be ready.
They attacked her verbally and provoked her, provoked this from her. And everybody knows she's been traumatized in her childhood, and we helping her work through it.
So at this... Sheriff, if there is any more outburst, we will clear the chamber of everyone in the chamber. That's correct.
Mr. Hardaway.
Okay.
You're recognized.
I'm Neemaya Hardaway. My address is 5442 Sunday Way, the Incorporated areas of Shelby County, 38105. And, you know, what we've just witnessed is an example of how not having integrity, right? Everything rolls downhill. The only reason why we're in this position right now is because of lack of integrity and honor that's been going on in our city for over 40 or 50 years. And if I was on the school board right now, I would vote to have term limits because of what has gone on. And so we have to put up security measures in place as we slowly build back integrity and honor. That is what this is all about. And so please allow us to slowly build up integrity and honor. Put these security measures in place, y'all. Because there are a lot of things that has been done that clearly shows that there are back-room conversations involving personal gain, right? Not really thinking about our children. If you were thinking about the heart of our children, what they face every day, you would not behave the way that you behave. Thank you.
Our last speaker on this item is Rachel Spriggs. Rachel Spriggs.
Rachel Spriggs, 440 North McNeil. I am against overriding the veto because it should have never even come to that. This is absolutely disenfranchising voters unless we get a referendum like Mikel Lowery was talking about. Unless we get recall legislation, which came out at the same time as the realignment bill. But of course, we know what's behind the realignment bill and what we trying to do for 2026, the midterm elections. We understand why Brittany may be... We understand why Brittany may be standing with this who hasn't had a win in District 10 for her whole terms. We understand why Ford is standing with this. But what I am asking is that you all stand again, stand for the veto, stand on it. Stand on business when it comes to not overturning this veto. Michael Whaley should not be able to vote. He should recuse himself because he works for leadership-
Okay.
-for educational equity. They have endorsed candidates? Yes, what's up? I hear some-
I don't, I don't address what's up.
Huh?
I don't, I don't dress, I'm not addressed as what's up. But what I'm trying to say are the folks in the back.
Okay.
This is the last time that I will make remarks. The next time I have to do that, you will just have to be removed.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Ms. Spriggs, I'll give you five seconds back on-
When you start spreading them facts, it start getting loud. Michael Whaley should not be able to vote today?
All right, that's it. That's it.
I want to finish this because I want this on record. He works for leadership for educational equity. He endorsed candidates that lost?
Thank you, Ms. Spriggs.
My time up?
Yes, time is up.
Okay, just make sure he recused himself today.
Thank you, Ms. Spriggs. So at this time, I'm gonna ask that we now prepare the screen for a vote. So at this time, at this time, what you all are voting on is a yes means that you override the veto, a no means you do not.
Point of order.
Commissioner Ford.
I'm in the queue to speak, so do I get no minutes? I'm right there. It's on your screen.
Commissioner Ford, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go through my notes real quick. To the person that said that the mayor's veto suppressed our vote, I agree with you. Don't be surprised after this vote is over. If you all leave, the mayor may come down here and start patting some of my colleagues on their heads like little pets. I am nobody's Fido and you shouldn't be anybody's Fifi. I don't give my legislative authority away. It's interesting how somebody believes they know how I vote on particular things when they haven't come to one of my meetings yet. I had one last week with 80 of my constituents. I told them about a whole lot of things that have been going on in this body, as well as the 11th floor. The people that support the veto being overridden stay around just in case the main person, the reason why we're down here, he may come down here after you leave and say, job well done. Here's a Scooby snack for you. Y'all know what I'm talking about. We have somebody who represents the Shelby County Democratic Party that wants to bring integrity when he has none at all. Also, oh, and I explained this to my, when the 80 people that came to my meeting, came to my meeting. I told them about a whole lot of things. Couple y'all came to the meeting. We had a great meeting. And when we asked those people where did they fall as far as this particular item, with the exception of maybe two out of the 80, they supported the override. So that means my vote's not gonna go anywhere. But if you are fine with people giving their legislative authority away and giving it up like they on Bellevue, you go right ahead and vote these people back in. I didn't mention names, but we know what time it is, folks. And as one person said as I close, we're really looking at how one particular person votes. We're really only looking at one. And we know what time it is. And even if that person does the right thing, that does not qualify that individual to win a 2026 election. Look at the entire, look at the entire deal. No, don't, look, don't throw anybody out because you know if you tried to, I would appeal the decision of the chair. I got 40 seconds left. Stop.
Commissioner Ford.
Stop, 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 chair, chairwoman. I'm gonna finish with my 30 seconds.
You're gonna have your 30 seconds.
Give it back to me then. We know why you became the chair, chairwoman. Can I have my 30 seconds back?
Commissioner Ford, you are out of order. You are out of order.
I can appeal the decision of the chair and then we'll be discussing this.
You are out of order.
Is that, is that your, is that your ruling?
At this point, I'm asking at this time so that everyone who is listening in can also hear this meeting. We've been very patient with this whole process in order to hear everyone. Commissioner Ford will get his time back, his 30 seconds. He doesn't have to be disrespectful to do that.
I just want to know-
In the same respect that you have, you ask and demand, I'm asking as well. So I am not doing anything but asking to quiet the chamber so that your voice can be heard.
I don't think they have an issue with hearing my voice.
If you could put down the 30 seconds for Commissioner Ford.
That is one opinion and we know where that opinion is. Y'all had no issue. Y'all heard every single word, every single syllable, every single vowel I said. It's not my fault that people are, they're scared of the person that's sitting here and they want to talk about protect the voters. These are the same cowards that tried to get rid of me. I support the veto.
Commissioner Thorndyke.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to just thank everyone, wherever you sat on this issue. We've had a lot of discussions, so I don't think that there's a lot more for me to say about why I have brought back the override for this particular item. A couple weeks ago, I went to one of my high schools and one of the students in the school, she actually said, ma'am, are you with the school board? And I was like, no, I'm on the Shelby County Commission. And she went on to go ahead and just completely bash her school. I asked, why were you in the hallway? She said, we roam the halls. Nobody, these folks don't care about us. And this is from a high school student that I don't think we'll come to a meeting like this tonight. And I don't think that all of the perspectives that have been voiced tonight are factoring in just how difficult the experience is in these inner-city schools. I know that, you know, one experience shouldn't be what God's, a decision like this tonight. But I do think that when we think about the power of five, we have the opportunity to be able to put back into the public the decision to really confirm that this school board is what we need in this moment. 2030 is a long time to wait. And I just ask that the persons that are not actually in these schools and having to deal with the direct ramifications of us not being where we need to be, the majority of our students are not graduating on grade level. I just found recently that one of my middle school students, which advertises that it's a back-to-back Level 5 school, Noah, 1% of the student body is proficient. 1%. And when he said that, I didn't even understand how that is even possible when the banner outside on the street is celebrating, what, 1%? If you go a little bit deeper, this past budget season, we spend more on plant services than we do on student support services. Something is very off about what's going on with our school board. And I think that to see where the conversation is resting itself, it's not enough of a sense of urgency. We need 2026 to happen to be assured that this is the body that is going to bring us out of this because right now, we are stuck in a place that we just have no hope to hope for. So I can't stress that enough. And I just, again, I know that this decision is going to really follow one of my colleagues. I really hope that you just hear beyond the noise and that you actually just support the people in being able to decide. I really do think that the people will get behind you if you support them in this moment. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Commissioner Lowry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to talk about, obviously, all this led us up to this point. It's amazing that our students are here as well from our student council. Thank y'all for being here. Unfortunately, you sometimes get to see how negative our culture can be when it comes to politics. It shouldn't be that way. We need a culture change. We should be doing better. We should be acting better. Quite frankly, people don't like to call that out just because you have a microphone and it make you right to say whatever you want to say. I want to point out that on September 22nd, when I missed this vote, which all in all, I had been voting for and speaking about realigning these elections to a different year. I also put up recall legislation that this body did not pass, which I disagreed with, but the body spoke. The body spoke, even though I disagreed with the way the body voted. I've been consistent with that. What I have been taking a long look at and listened to so many people talk about this issue even makes us all divided right now. And I appreciate you all being here, but it's a divisive issue. It's polarizing at the end of the day. Quite frankly, this may not make board members happy or anybody else happy. I don't think we have the right model in place as is. I think we should be looking at changing that altogether to do what we're doing. The same things over and over again has not made us progress. When people want to talk about elections, well, I'm running. All right. But I also have children that are in our school system. And I want the best for them, which means I want the best for every child that's in our school system. So let me just know that these votes and these things come at a difficult pace for me because I think about historical value as well. I also think about the historical value of when the veto has ever been used before. There's been a mayor here before, A.C. Ward, and I think he used a veto one time in six years. From my research, I believe Willie Harrington used a veto zero times in 19 years. There's historical value in that as well. But the conversation I want to start having is about our model altogether. Is it the right one that's even in place? Even if it's against something that I fundamentally probably agree with. So if this is going to engage more people in the process, then so be it. More people engaged talking about voting now and in school board elections than ever before. It's a good thing. Unfortunately, it's terrible how we got here. But what we're gonna do going forward? I don't think I'm gonna tell my students and students we should just do everything the same way because we've always done it. So for that reason, for that reason, this body spoke on September 22nd. And I have fundamental respect, respect for this body, even when I disagree with you all. This body spoke on September 22nd and therefore, I'm gonna vote to let this body speak for this vote going forward. But it also means that there going to be re-engagement from people all over. So keep this same energy, regardless of whatever side you on. I love a lot of you folks on both of this and you know it. Some of you gonna be upset with me. I get it. And Madam Chair, I'm very be quiet. I appreciate you indulged me since I wasn't here on September 22nd and things I've had to go through there, so I apologize for that. People want to say this is gonna end up in litigation. You know what? They're probably right. And you know what? It probably should. It probably should. And it should be probably decided by a court at the end of the day. But no matter what, the engagement is real. So let's talk about being something different going forward. This body spoke on September 22nd. My vote's gonna beat the uphill with this body because the respect I have and the same wherewithal I'm gonna carry forward if I get appointed to that seat that somebody else was talking about. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, and Bradford. Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Brooks, and Chairwoman Avan have voted no. We have eight ayes and four noes.
That motion passes. Parliamentarian, please read, we're gonna go back to the front part of the agenda. We're gonna go to item number 31. Parliamentarian, please read item 31.
Item 31 comes from the Public Works Committee with Chairman David Bradford. Item 31 is an ordinance first reading. Ordinance approving an interlocal agreement between the cities of Milton, Tennessee and Lakeland, Tennessee, and the town of Arlington, Tennessee and Shelby County, Tennessee, authorizing the Shelby County Fire Department to provide emergency ambulance service in these municipalities sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Whaley. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. I have 10 ayes and one abstained.
That motion passed. So this goes on to the second reading. Parliamentarian, could you read item number 32?
Chairwoman, item 32 is on the third reading. I ask that once the item is read into the record and properly moved, and second, that you allow me to read a summary of the item into the record.
Please.
Item 32 comes from the Hospital and Health Committee chaired by Chairman Misca Clay Bibbs. Item 32 is an ordinance third reading. Ordinance to amend Chapter 42 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinance to establish advance notice requirements for lead hazard, reduction in plumbing work, and to amend Chapter 6 to provide a cross-reference to such requirements, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton. Item 32 summary reads, "This ordinance amends Chapter 42 and 6 of the Shelby County Code to establish a local notification process for plumbing work involving potential lead hazards. It requires licensed plumbers to provide at least seven days advance notice to Shelby County Health Department before beginning non-emergency work that may disturb lead service lines or notified by the next business day in emergency situation. The purpose is to improve public health protection and oversight of work that could impact drinking water quality. It adds a new Article IV under Chapter 42 and a cross-reference in Chapter 6. Enforcement will occur through existing plumbing permitting and inspection system managed by county code enforcement with administrative record-keeping by the Health Department. The ordinance does not set aside new funding but require the Health Department to manage additional administrative tasks related to notification and record-keeping. Any fines collected under this ordinance, up to $50 per day, will be directed to the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program to help support local lead hazard prevention work. This ordinance requires a two-thirds vote by the Board of Commissioners for final approval. It will take effect January 1st, 2026, if adopted."
I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Whaley. Commissioner Thornton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. After consulting with legal, there has been an internal request to defer this to the next committee meeting. I believe, is that the 12th?
Our next committee meeting is November 12th.
Okay. Okay.
So that means you would like to refer it to committee?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Thornton to refer item 32 to committee. I have a second by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Lowry, you want to speak on that before?
This is parliamentary inquiry. Since this is the third reading, will we need to suspend the rules to refer this?
The rules states if they want to make any amendments to the ordinance on third reading, they have to suspend the rules in accordance with Rule 27. Section B, no permanent rule of order or the county commission shall be suspended except by two-thirds votes of the commissioners present and voting.
So just clarity from the county attorney, if we're referring it to committee, is it still needed? Do we still need to have a vote to suspend the rules? Or is that just when it comes back to this body?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, this item does not require suspension of the rules. There's no substantive change to the ordinance. It is a referral for a vote.
Okay. So can we do that without objection? Seeing no objection, this item is referred to the November 12th committee meeting.
Chair, I had some more time. I just wanted to add to legal, if we could just ensure that the advocates, particularly President Adams, that she CC'd on any communications. Thank you.
Okay. Parliamentary, if we could read number 33, 34, and 35 together?
Items 33, 34, and 35 come from the Land Use Planning Transportation and Code Enforcement Committee with Chairman David Bradford. Item 33 is an ordinance second reading. Joint Ordinance Amending the 2021 Memphis and Chevy County Building Code so as to amend storm shelter requirements for educational buildings and add a new appendix relating to optional middle-scale housing construction requirements. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item 34, ordinance second reading. Joint Ordinance Amending the 2021 Memphis and Chevy County Existing Building Code as to amend storm shelter requirements for educational buildings and optional middle-scale housing construction requirements. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr. Item 35, ordinance second reading. Ordinance amending the 2021 Chevy County Fire Prevention Code sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Okay. Can I get a motion? A motion by Commissioner Bradford, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Ford, you're recognized.
I move to divide this question. I need it bifurcated to where 33 and 34 is one vote and 35 is separate. I need to vote no on 33 and 34.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ford to bifurcate. I have a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Can we do that without objection? All right. Colleagues, we are voting. We'll first have 33 and 34 together.
Chair, I'm still in the queue, ma'am. I speak on 33 and 34 quickly.
Commissioner Ford, you're recognized.
Thank you. The reason, and you already know that I'm voting against 33 and 34 is because even though the joint ordinance deals with amending storm shelter requirements, I still believe that we should not cut corners when it comes to our youth. We just had a great ribbon cutting over there for the STEM lab in Whitehaven, and it does have a storm shelter, and I know it did cost a little bit more. But you never know when it's that particular time. So even though this will most likely pass, my vote, and I brought this up in my community meeting as well, will be no on 33 and 34 for that reason. Thank you.
Commissioner Clay Bivs, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I originally kind of was like in the middle about this item, about storm shelters. But Memphis Marriott Academy just recently had their ribbon cutting, their groundbreaking. And one of the things that they have is a storm shelter. And they talked about how they've been able to use it in their build and what it's, all of the great things they've been able to use it for. So in their law school, they have it, and then in their new bill, it is a part of their plan. So for that reason alone is why I'm not going to support us taking that out of educational buildings because I've seen it in action.
All right, Commissioner. Vice Chair Bradford.
Mr. Bethay is here, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. This doesn't actually take it out. It just does not make it a requirement. So it still is the option of whoever's building the school. They can still put the storm shelter in. That's just kind of what this legislation does. So it still allows them to be built. It just does not make it a requirement. So it still could be a concern from building the school and not having it in there, but it does not certainly say it's not, it's just the option to whoever's building the school to put it in there. If that's correct?
That's correct. I'm Ron Bethay. I'm the administrator of construction enforcement. And the division feels that the mandatory requirement for storm shelters could be a cost prohibitive to smaller projects that are not, that don't have access to public funding or very little access to public funding or are not eligible for FEMA grants, that the storm shelter requirement for those projects is a significant enough expense to be prohibitive to the development of smaller educational occupancies. They can still be constructed and provided for larger school products, projects where economy of scale is, and grant money is available to offset the cost.
Okay. So colleagues, before us now, we have item 33 and 34. And Madam Clerk, we're able to vote on those two items together? Okay. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Caswell, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan. Commissioner Ford is voting no. Commissioner Clay Bivs has abstained. I have eight ayes, one no, and one abstained.
That motion passes. Now, colleagues, we are voting on item number 35. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bivs, Caswell, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Morrison, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan. We have 10 eye votes.
That motion passes. Ms. Karen Spencer-McGee. Ms. McGee, if you could speak in the microphone.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Spencer-McGee, Black Lives Matter of Memphis. Because of obvious reasons, I don't give my address out. Tammy can cuss, I can cuss. Two round, three down. Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Thornton, I've had a few Zoom calls this afternoon and two last week about the conditions of the jail. And I'd like to know how do I get a tour? I've got a few people that want to go on a tour because you can't advocate for something unless you know what's really going on up in there. So these three and four-hour Zoom calls, did I be on? Because now, a Caucasian woman's son has died under that watch of a drug overdose in the jails. So along with the other four sisters that sons have been unalived, if that's politically correct, at 201 popular. Now that I got bigger with the good hair, I'm going to see if I can get something done. So what is that process?
So I'll defer to anyone here that's with the sheriff's office. So that decision, per my understanding, is going to come from Sheriff Bonner. And so...
You know that man ain't going to talk to me. You know that man is not going to talk to me.
Well, I know when we do legislation, we have to make requests to the sheriff. So we don't have the discretion to authorize the tours. And even when I go in for the inside-outside circles, they have to get approved by his staff. So I would think that, I mean, just send an email, CC the chairwoman, CC myself, to see what is his reason for why or why not. But that's my best advice.
Well, just for clarification, ever since I asked him for my paperwork when I was put on that BOLO list, he won't talk to me. He won't answer my phone calls, and he will not return my emails. But that's just for clarification. I'll send it to you. Thank you much. Y'all have a rest, good day.
Okay, Jordan Coley, public comment from Jordan Coley. Is Jordan Coley still present? Okay. Parliamentary, if you could, read item 36.
Madam Chair, item 36 on the third reading as well. Once I read the item into the record, would you allow me to read the summary as well? Item 36 comes from the General Government Committee with Chairman Harry E. Brooks. Item 36, ordinance third reading. Ordinance amending the Chevy County Charter to amend Article 5, Section 5.24, recall of elected county officers, and 2, Article 6, Section 6.02, County Board of Education, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman. The summary reads, this ordinance seeks to amend the Chevy County Charter to authorize the recall of school board members of the county school board when and where authorized by state law. This item requires a two-thirds vote of the membership of the Board of County Commissioners for approval. Upon approval, the same shall be submitted to the voters of Chevy County, Tennessee for referendum.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Brooks, could I get a committee report?
This item will sit down without recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Lowry, you're recognized.
I'd just like to be added as second. As we all know, I sponsored legislation to do just the same. It didn't pass in this body. So this seems to be brought up again, so I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Can we do that without objection? Madam Clerk, could you prepare the screen for a vote? Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bivs, Caswell, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan. Commissioner Brooks has abstained. I have nine ayes and one abstained.
That, that motion passes. Parliamentary, please read item number 37.
Item 37 comes from the General Government Committee with Chairwoman Commissioner Harry E. Brooks. Item 37 is an ordinance first reading. Ordinance to amend the Chevy County Code of Ordinance by amending Chapter 30, Article 6, Division 2, to create a new section 30-234, creating rules for solitary confinement in the Chevy County Division of Correction and prohibiting its overuse. Sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell, Commissioner Erica Sugarman, Commissioner Harry E. Brooks, and Commissioner Brittany Thornton. This item was amended in October 22nd, 2025 committee meeting.
I have a motion by Commissioner Thornton, a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bivs, Caswell, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, and Chairwoman Avan. Commissioners Morrison and Bradford have abstained. We have nine ayes and two abstained.
That motion passes and goes on to a second reading. Parliamentary, please read item 38.
Item 38 is an ordinance first reading. Ordinance approving and setting the salary of the mayor of Chevy County for the 2026-2030 term of office. Sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. This item was amended in October 22nd, 2025 committee meeting.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ford, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen. Commissioner Ford, you're recognized.
If nobody had any questions, I'll be ready for this to go to the second reading where we can discuss this more. So if nobody has any questions, I yield.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen for a vote. Madam Clerk, please report the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bivs, Caswell, Ford, Thornton, Brooks, Lowry, and Chairwoman Avan. Commissioners Mills, Wright, Morrison, and Bradford have abstained. I have eight ayes and four abstained.
Okay, that motion passes and goes on to the second reading. Parliamentary, please read item number 39.
Item 39 comes from the Budget and Finance Committee with Chairman Whaley. Item 39 is a resolution to amend the FY 2026 operating budget for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund four full-time employees' positions: accounting specialists, appeals specialists, supervisor A and deputy court clerk II. This item requires appropriation expenditure of FY 2026 general funds in an amount not to exceed $241,340, including benefits. Sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell Jr. This item was an add-on and sit-down without recommendation in October 22nd, 2025 committee meeting.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Can, Commissioner Whaley, can I get a committee report?
Yes, it came down without recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Ford.
If you weren't in committee, basically, we have some competing perspectives. We have the, we have the Chevy County Circuit Court Clerk's Office. We have our clerk here versus the finance. And I'm surprised HR is not here because what's going to end up happening, I'm going to go ahead and put it out there. I'm gonna go ahead and put it out there. They're gonna be looking at the projections. So let's just see where the votes fall. But we asked, and I think Chair Emeritus Whaley also asked with me, that both sides be ready to discuss this. And to the clerk, Mr. Joyner did state the chronology on how we got here. So just be ready to talk about how we got here if need be. What I would consider a pocket veto. But at the same time, I know that this commissioner was on record stating there was an amendment where I said, make sure that the dollars are there with your projections and whatnot. So I'm gonna leave it there, let the games begin, and let's have a very good debate. Thank you.
I don't see any other commissioners in the queue, but I am gonna hear from the clerk. Go ahead.
Thank you very kindly, Janita Swearingen, Shelby County Circuit Clerk, one forty Adams. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege, if I may. I am a past city councilperson where I served seven years. That form of government, you have a weak legislative government and a strong mayor. Here in the county, you all have a strong legislative government and a weak mayor. On December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, you all approved a resolution that came before you allowing us to have four full-time employees returned to our PCB. December the twentieth, the mayor signed that resolution and approval. Today is October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and we still have not been granted those full-time employees. We're here today, you all have approved it, the mayor has signed off on it, and we are humbly asking you to ask the administration and the mayor to grant us those full-time employees. Four is the number. That's why we're standing before you at present.
All right, thank you. I don't have any other commissioners in the queue. No, Commissioner Whaley.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Bradford. So we'd like to just sort of get to the point, which is around the revenues to fund this. That's really what, just so we can cut to that. And Director Schombach, if you've got any information around the collections and whether they've exceeded budget and by enough to cover this request. That's also been referenced in this letter that you've included, that the mayor sent. So Director Schombach, if you wouldn't mind helping us with that.
So Danielle Schombach, Deputy Director, Administration and Finance. So I went back to FY twenty-two, so over the last several years. And with the exception of FY twenty-four, in which year the clerk's office did exceed revenue by six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. And every other year, FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-five, they fell short of projected fines and fees revenue. At this point in FY twenty-six, they stand, and at this point being the end of September, so the first quarter, so a quarter of the year, they stand at twenty-four percent of budgeted revenue. They have noted that there isn't going to be an increase in the level of the fee being charged that's by the state. And so we should see an increase in revenue in the second half of the year. But I would note that regardless of, so this isn't going to decrease our use of fund balance. At best, they are hoping to be flat and not use more fund balance. I would remind this body that we are at a very low percentage of fund balance. And any increase in revenue, the administration would hope would help us to start rebuilding our fund balance rather than just keep us flat. Additionally, even though the office lost four positions, their PCB budget has increased year over year. Between FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, it was flat. But one would assume if you're losing positions, that your salary budget might be decreasing. And we're not seeing that. This is an office that is, has a planned use of fund balance every year. So, you know, if we approve this resolution, we would likely at best have no change in that planned use of fund balance for FY twenty-six.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing any commissioners in the queue. So let's take this item to a vote. All right, if all commissioners had the opportunity to vote, let's record the results.
I'd like to humbly thank the commissioners for your support.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Clay Bivs, Caswell, Ford, Thornton, Brooks, and Lowry. Commissioners Wright and Morrison have voted no. Commissioner Bradford has abstained. I have seven ayes, two noes, and one abstained.
Thank you. That item passes. Please read item forty.
Item forty is a resolution approving a contract with Avenue Government Systems LLC to provide circuit court, chancery court, and probate court case management system maintenance and oracle maintenance in an amount not to exceed one-hundred forty-four thousand, four-hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents for the initial year, and no more than a five percent increase for each renewal period, commencing from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This item requires the shared expenditure of FY twenty-twenty-six circuit court clerk general funds in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. FY twenty-twenty-six chancery court general funds in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. This item requires a budget amendment to increase the FY twenty-twenty-six probate court general fund revenue commission fees. And FY twenty-twenty-six probate general court fund expenditures in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. And FY twenty-twenty-six information technology service general funds in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-five cents for oracle maintenance for circuit court, chancery court, and probate court for a total expenditure of one-hundred forty-four thousand, four-hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Sponsored by Commissioner Michael Whaley. This was an add-on item in October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five committee meeting. Item does not meet requirements of permanent rules.
Thank you. Looking for a mover, a seconder? Moved by Commissioner Whaley, seconded by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Whaley on a report.
Yes, item forty came with a favorable recommendation. And then we'll need a motion to suspend the rules.
Commissioner Ford, do you have the motion?
I'd like to move to suspend the rule for the purposes of getting this item in front of us.
Second.
We have a motion by Ford and a second by Whaley to suspend the rules. Commissioner Ford, do you have additional discussion?
Very quickly, I do support this item. And there are a lot of items in here that these aforementioned offices need. And Chair, Vice Chair, when we dispose of this item, we do have our youth here. And I believe that they're gonna be, they wanna speak on forty-two. If I'm outnumbered, so be it. But when we get to that particular item, I wanna make sure that they get at least two minutes. So if I gotta suspend a rule or whatever the case may be, they've done some work today. So after we dispose this item, I wanna make sure that they're able to speak.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue on this item, let's take this item to a vote. All right, all commissioners have had the opportunity to vote. Let's record the results.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Morrison, Brooks, Lowry, and Bradford. We have nine eye votes.
Thank you. That item passes. Let's read item forty-two.
Item forty-two comes from the General Government Committee with Chairwoman Harry E. Brooks. Item forty-two is a resolution requesting that Governor Bill Lee reallocate funds used to deploy the Tennessee National Guard in Memphis and Shelby County, and instead direct state support toward evidence-based public safety and community well-being investments, including a regional crime lab, local law enforcement staffing, education, housing, pre-K programs, a new jail, and Regional One Hospital. Sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Harry E. Brooks. This was an add-on and sent down with our recommendation in October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five committee meeting.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Commissioner Whaley and seconded by... Nobody. In the system, I got Commissioner Brooks. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Brooks. And Commissioner Brooks on a report.
I was not in the room.
I was there. It went down without recommendation.
Thank you. I do have six cards in front of me here, so I'm gonna go through these six cards. And Commissioner Ford, if this does not include the Youth Council, we'll give them time as well. All right. The first card I have is for Brooklyn Reeves. Brooklyn, if you'll come up here, state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes to speak on this topic.
Hi, I'm Brooklyn Reeves. My address is thirteen thirty Allen Place East, three-eight, one-oh-three. And I'm a senior, and I'm a part of S.C.Y.C. Shelby County Youth Commission. And I like what Mikel Lowry had to say, that Memphis has a beautiful and unique culture and community. But when you introduce agencies like ICE and the National Guard, that community and culture gets disrupted. And lots of times, I hear from adults like you, like politicians and those in power, that you're trying to invest in the youth because the youth are the future. Well, why take away funding from the youth programs like after, like community programs and put it towards the National Guards, which is making children and students scared to go to school? So I am in support of this resolution because investing in education, housing, and healthcare is what creates real change in community in Memphis. And remember, the same young people who are affected by the National Guard are also the ones growing up and voting for the next commissioners and the next mayors. And thank you.
Thank you, Brooklyn. The next card I have is Shereen Sarudin. I must have mispronounced it because they're giggling. Please correct me on my pronunciation. If you'll give your address, you'll have two minutes.
Do I start? Okay. Hi, my name is Shereen Sarudin, and my address is four-seven-seven North Fifth Street, Memphis, Tennessee. I'm a youth representative of District Two of Shelby County and a member of Shelby County Youth Council. First and foremost, thank you for your continued support of the Shelby County Youth Council and the work we do to uplift and empower young voices in our community. Today, I'm here to share with you our youth mental health campaign. This campaign is designed to raise awareness and advocate for accessible mental health resources for young people across the county. Mental health remains one of the most under-discussed issues affecting our youth. Too often, their struggles are dismissed, misunderstood, or met with silence. Many young people fear being judged if they open up about what they're going through. And even if they do, the support they need is often out of reach. The simple truth is, in many schools, the only mental health resource available is a single counselor, and that's not enough. Our youth deserve more than a system that leaves them waiting and unsupported. They deserve access to comprehensive mental health care and safe spaces to speak freely, adults who listen without judgment. It's time we recognize that mental health is just as vital as physical health and start treating it that way. Our campaign aims to change that by amplifying youth voices, breaking down stigma, and pushing for resources that meet their needs. We invite you to get involved and stand with us in advocating for a future where speaking up about mental health is met with understanding, not fear. Together, we can build a community that listens, supports, and empowers every young person because they are the future. I'd like to thank you once again for your time and all that you have done to this moment to support our mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Next up, I have Jordan T. Coley.
Good evening, Chairperson, Commissioner Sugarman, hope you're here, and members of the Shelby County Commissioners. My name is Jordan Coley, and my address is four-seven-seven North Fifth Street. And I serve as the youth representative for District Twelve and a proud member of the Shelby County Youth Council. I wanna start with the myth that youth don't struggle, or if we do, adults already know what's best for us. But the truth is, youth mental health is one of the greatest crises of our generation, and no one understands it better than we do. We see classmates disappear behind smiles. We watch our friends cry silently in bathrooms between classes and still. Decisions are still made about our mental health that are made without us in the room. That ends now. Our goal is simple, to make youth mental health a priority and not a promise in the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven Shelby County budget. Because we may not have a ballot, but we do have a voice. We are not powerless because we cannot vote. We're powerful because we live in this reality every single day. So tonight, I'm asking every Commissioner here and every leader in this room to stand with us, invest in the counselors, invest in the safe spaces, invest in the hopes that keeps us alive. Because when you invest in youth mental health, you invest in the heartbeat of this community. We are not the problem, but we are the possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. All right, next up, I have London Jordan.
Good evening. My name is London Jordan, and my address is four-seventy-seven North Fifth Street. And I'm an educated justice community organizer. I wanted to talk about this agenda item because I think it's a great resolution to allocate these funds. And as an education reform advocate, I do agree with increasing funding of the pre-K education programs. Now, what I wanted to mention within this resolution is that the inclusion of creating a new jail isn't like supportive of the community. It's not really serving a good purpose for the community. And I feel like you're, I mean, you're creating a new jail. You're just creating an idea of recidivism rather than actually supporting the community, giving more resources to the community. And also, while we're having the National Guard here, we're already running out of resources as it is. So rather than creating new jails, we should be focusing on investing more into education for our future generation and figuring out ways on how to figure, on how to create safety without causing mass incarceration, which is already happening in the United States. And we're also creating a racial caste system. We should be looking for new ways on how to improve the Memphis community. And finally, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, London. All right, next card I have is Mark Williams.
Hey, how you doing? Mark Williams. Wow, I'm sorry. Mark Williams, four-seven-seven North Fifth Street, Bridges, USA. My name is Mark Williams, and I'm the Shelby County Youth Counselor, Representative for District Ten. For the past year, I've been working to ensure that the youth across this county are seen, heard, and validated. I'm pleased to be working with Commissioner Thornton Tiree Board on critical youth issues. But we have a critical youth mental health crisis. According to data points, over forty percent of our high schools reported that depressive systems in twenty-twenty-one and that suicide is the leading cause of death among Tennessee youth. The goal for S.C.Y.C. this school year is to make a decent The goal for SCYC this school year is to make a decisive impact on the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget explicitly for youth mental health. Many youth do not know they have access to three, twelve-plus free mental health services through Youth Connect. Dealing with consent, according to Tennessee Code, if you are sixteen, you can get mental health support without parent permission. Youth do not know that they can request a CIT officer. There are some youth and juvenile system right now with mental health problems that are helping, they are thrown to jail because youth do not know their mental health rights. I wish I had a pamphlet, but unfortunately, I do not have it. Um, adultism and psychatization of mental health affects youth on all levels, and we are committed to helping alleviate many of these barriers to care. We have many years of the county commission behind me to show the support for increased funds and allocations towards youth mental health. We have already de-campus two-hundred-plus youth, and we plan to do more. I was at the Thorn to be Heard Tournament, thank Commissioner Thornton, deducting some time to talk about youth and de-campus. While my public comment, well, it does kind of match this item. It does match this item, it still points up critical internal issues leading to the county which affects youth. Again, poverty, social status, and more shouldn't affect your status and your ability to get mental health resources. Commissioners, I ask for your dedicated time and attention to this matter, but to also listen to youth and their stories, a bunch more youth that's made public comments. We can't defeat this epidemic, but only if we work together to achieve this goal. I yield my time.
All right, thank you, that, uh, is the end of the cards that I have. Uh, thank you all for being here. Um, it means a lot to hear from the youth. Uh, I'm gonna go to the queue now, Commissioner Ford.
All right, thank you, and, uh, thank you all for staying. You got a very good, um, educational experience today regarding things, for, to say the least. So I will, um, I, I do have an update regarding, um, the topic, and to make sure that we stay within forty-two. Uh, I will qualify what you're saying as a community well-being investment. Now, even though I have to, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from this item because it, it conflicts with what I've already stated, uh, on September the twelfth. It does not take away the resolution that I brought for the purposes of making sure that you've got investments. So, this is what I want you all to do, I'm, I'm gonna give you an update on where we are on youth mental health and money that was put in. I want y'all to do two things for me. One, if you're not aware of these, um, of the community advocacy, I want you to get that experience, and I want, uh, community services to give you the information of what's being done. If you are familiar with it and you think that things can be done better, that's when I want y'all to come back and state to us, what we have is good, however, we would like to see this later. Because this commissioner would like to see, whether it's during budget season or right before, either we re-up what's working here, or if you all have other ideas that can add to the body of knowledge. The goal is to make sure that we have the funding, so I'll be real quick. The racial equity ad hoc committee funding, and that's why I was so strict about making sure that the money goes back to the community, and that's why you heard me say about one group that I believe was not doing the right thing, is do the right thing about the people, especially if there are youth. So the youth mental health got seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and this came from the, um, director. Thanks to community advocacy during the COVID pandemic, the Shelby County Board of Commissioners dedicated funding specifically for youth mental health programming. With that funding, they were able to hire a full-time position and somebody who's a coordinator who collaborates with the Brave Foundation on administering the Youth Connect program, which is designed to address the mental health needs of youth in Shelby County by creating a simple, accessible pathway to both individual and group counseling services, offering twelve free therapy sessions, also building a dedicated network of therapists who are culturally responsive, because sometimes we don't have that, and identity-affirming thereby strengthening sustainability and quality of local mental health support for young people. In a year's time, we have served three-hundred-and-forty-five distinct young people with thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine sessions. Ninety-one percent of those young people identified as Black, African-American, or Hispanic. And we were able to provide another half a million dollars in additional funds to go to therapy services. So if you're familiar with it, great, if you're not familiar with it, get involved, and if you have anything, last five seconds, if you don't mind, to bring back how we can make it better. Definitely want to make sure that you can help us get this supported so that we can re-up this, so it won't be a one-off. Thank you. I yield.
Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, thank you, young people, for being here and staying, uh, throughout the night. One of my meetings today was with Juvenile Court and just Sugarman Office around mental health issues, uh, and things that's going on in the jail. And one of the things that we know that we're gonna have to do going forward is, like you said, engaging those at the state level. It's great that you all came down here. I wish, as we were in budget this season, we're able to put dollars in the budget because we know, we didn't know even the, uh, things that's happening now with food stamps being cut off and how that's gonna impact families' children hunger, uh, in many of our communities. That's gonna have a major impact on you all. Uh, to Bridges, um, I say, I don't know, are you all planning a, uh, day on the hill, taking these young people to Nashville? I, Director? Yeah, you planning, because I'd like to support that, uh, through CEP and get with you on a budget. If it's a bus and maybe taking care of the food, that I'd like to get with you on a budget of that and support that in CEP to take these young people, because one thing for us to ask for here is another to advocate it at the state level. And when we took students from Frazier to the state around, uh, House Bill twenty-five-eight-eight, around adverse childhood experience, those young people advocated and got those legislators to pass that bill for us. It wasn't us as adults, it was the young people's voices they heard on that floor that got that done. So I know it can work when we get these young people there. So, uh, I get with you on what that looks like, a budget in, uh, the new year as legislation. Uh, I know some of these things, items y'all talk about, are in our legislative agenda to talk about getting resources, pre-K and other things. Uh, we need you, you all helping to advocate. So we, I want to help support getting them to Nashville so that they can be there on the floor, talking to those legislators to make that happen for us. So that's one thing there, but two, it continue to be organizing on the ground level here as we get ready to go into budget next year, to make sure we put those dollars there. Because we are not funding at the capacity that we need to. When we look at the capacity, where we are with childhood poverty and ten of the poor zip codes in this county and city, that, that equates back to the crime that what we're seeing. People can say different, but we see that if you don't have nothing to eat, we had the person from the bail hearing talked about folks going in the store, getting arrested for stealing food because they're hungry. I mean, what, you know, and again, how do we help those families that's trying to get food back to their children? So, thank you all for coming out, uh, continue the advocacy and the work that you're doing, and let's talk about how we can support it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and before Commissioner Thornton speaks, there are two more comment cards, so I did want to give them an opportunity, uh, since they have been able to be here and, and hearing youth voice is very important. Uh, the next is Huma Isa. And I apologize if I have mispronounced your name, if you could just correct me when you state your name and address for the record.
Hello, thank you for letting me up. My name is Hamza Isa. My address is five-one-one-five Covington Way, three-eight-one-three-four. I am a youth leader with MVC, Muslim Voices for Change, and I'm here to speak about Resolution Forty-two and how I think the funds should be used for mental health and for education. Instead of giving our funds to federal forces and National Guard, I feel that we should allow our funds to be given to only mental health and to education. I do not like how the funds are being used in a new jail while it can be used for a, for a school education that is struggling to support their students, and that it can help, um, and not just in education, but also in mental health. And also, we have to keep in mind, in the housing, that is much needed help in Memphis and Shelby County that is being pushed to be used for a new jail, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our last speaker, uh, Tariq, and I'm gonna say Tariq Q. I don't know how to pronounce it, I don't want to mispronounce the last name. And if you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ty Kholdymad. My address is five-one-one-five Covington Way, three-eight-one-three-four. I am a youth leader with Muslim Voices for Change. And I urge you to vote no on Resolution Forty-two, because although I support taking funds away from ICE and other federal agencies and the National Guard, I don't believe the fundings should go to a new jail. The reason why I don't support giving funds to ICE is because the funds for ICE could be used on more important establishments, such as mental hospitals, schools for the children, and homeless shelters for the ones without houses to live in.
Thank you. And Commissioner Thornton, you're rocking that.
Thank you, Chair. I think the last speaker, so, just a thumbs up or thumbs down, are y'all supporting this item, forty-two? Just, are you, if you're in support, can you give a thumbs up for item number forty-two? Because he said vote no when he came to speak. You just said you don't support this item? Okay, and just for my personal understanding, because I've been listening from the back, can y'all give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on how you want us to vote on this item? So y'all, by and large, don't support this item? Okay, um, just wanted to get some clarity around that, um... Okay, so, there's a mixed group of, okay, opinions? Okay. So, I want to just first say, thank y'all for being here. I still need clarity on, is this one uniform coalition for this particular item, or are there mixed opinions? Can, Mahal, will you just, I, I hear you saying something, if you could, I can lend some of my time just to hear from the group.
Hi, um, Mahal, the, she, uh, four-seven-seven North Fifth Street. I think what I understood from what was shared is that the youth agree with the first part, and they would like to edit the second part of where the funds are going to. Um, to, rather than naming a new jail, I focus more on youth mental health, is what I heard.
Okay, that's received. Thank you for the clarity. I do just want to say, I know that the, seeing a new jail put into this language seems to be pretty off-putting to this group. I just am curious, how many, or if anyone in the group, are, do any of y'all go to Hamilton High School, Oak Haven High School, or Merrill's High School? Is there anyone here tonight representing any of those schools? Okay, so just wanted to just be sure. Um, I have continuously advocated, um, for two-year leaders, um, to push to be able to go a little bit deeper to get additional student voice. Those schools are three schools that I represent in District Ten, and they're in the heart of some of the most, um, dis-serviced communities within my district. And so, um, I know y'all probably aren't as familiar, Mark knows about District Ten, but I wouldn't expect everyone to know about it. This particular district compared, I heard someone say that they live on Covington Way. Between my district and District Ten, you're expected to live ten less years, just living in my district. And so there's some real disparities from one district to the next, and I just want to put that on y'all's radar. I'm gonna get back in queue just to say a couple more things, because I do need y'all's help on something.
Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. The new jail, I know that that's not a priority for this group, it seems. But I have to press that, I don't know if y'all been following the education statistics that have said that the majority of students that graduate from MSCS are not on great level. So when we think about that, once you go from being cool, like, students, to just being an eighteen-year-old and an adult that can't read and is trying to find a way around not having a living wage, there are some choices that you make, and I'm pretty sure I'm speaking to some people in the audience that know people in your family, from your home communities, that just have not had, um, the fairest chance to be successful. And so these are my neighbors. I live in Orange Mountain right now, and I am speaking on behalf of the nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two-year-olds that have told me their experiences of being failed by the school system, and I'm seeing them come in and out of two-on-one. So, one thing that y'all haven't had the privilege to hear is how this commission has been told by the sheriff that our jail literally has reached the point of no return. So the jail facility in and of itself is broke down, and there is, there, there is not enough emergency expenditures to fix it. So we have to get a new jail, and a part of our responsibilities are to ensure that we have a hospital, a jail, and schools. So, I just want to just let you guys know that, uh, it's not that I support the jail over education. I believe that education is the root, and honestly, I believe that universal tuition-free pre-K is the best thing that we should be doing. Um, but I do want to make a case that the new jail should be on the list just because there's far too many people coming in and out of that jail. It's overcrowded right now, and it's a trauma center. So when those persons are coming back to our communities, these are our cousins, these are people that are heads of households, these are folks that you see on these corner stores, these are people that literally, um, have been disenfranchised by these broken systems. So, that's just a passionate plea on behalf of people like Fairley, like Terrence. I can name actual names of people whose faces I can think of in this moment. So, just want to put that point out there. Um, I appreciate you guys and respect you so much for advocating, and please, 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 if y'all can, look at the neighborhoods around these schools, because they, um, are broken as well. I'm pretty sure when y'all get together, you talk about schools, start talking about neighborhoods too, and let's start to get some student voice to advocate for neighborhoods that need additional support. And there are far too many in District Ten that I see could really benefit from having your voice come and champion it. So, y'all have power. I want to also just say, um, to Mahal with, um, Commissioner Caswell, when he offered support to get the group to Nashville, District Ten would love to be a part of that, and I would love to try to get, um, some of the students from the neighborhood schools in District Ten to be present, because they continue to not be present in these great moments. So, I want them to learn alongside you guys, and I just need y'all's help to reach a little bit deeper in a district like District Ten. So thank y'all, and I appreciate y'all for being here.
Commissioner Ford?
My last comments, and I'm gonna go in backwards order, even though I'm going to abstain from this particular item. This is an educational moment, so I did talk to a couple of people down there as well as Reggie. So, when you look at this item, I don't want you to think that we are completely absent from doing our part when it comes to these items that are up here. For example, Regional One Hospital, there has been, uh, capital money put in. However, the grown-ups need to take care of their business so that we will not get another ding by the state in order to continue that investment. When you look at a new jail, my colleagues already talked about that, so I won't go ad nauseam about that. Pre-K programs, uh, my colleague and I, during the budget process, uh, through cuts and savings, two million dollars extra was put in those, uh, pre-K programs. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, those that were involved regarding the cuts and the additions to championing that, so another two million on top, which could have been put in the budget. So I don't want, I don't want the people on the eleventh floor to be given a pass for not putting in stuff themselves, because if they put it in, then you don't have to necessarily come down here. But to tell us, vote for what's already in place. Y'all see what I'm saying with that? So if it's not put in place upstairs, that's when we have to come down here and make our case. As far as, uh, housing, we just had a great group of, uh, individuals, um, that met, where we talked about, um, things such as receiverships, where those bad actors regarding housing that don't necessarily live in your neighborhood but have property, it's time for them to go through a particular process in environmental court so that we can receive those properties back. As far as education, we talked about that. Law enforcement staffing, I won't even get into that. I don't have enough time to talk about that. Regional Crime Lab, uh, I think we put in two-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, you had people that supported it, but the main people that supported it did not put it in the budget, but we did. And it goes back to, uh, community well-being investment. So the homework assignment, Reggie, with your group, and I'll reiterate, is, is as follows. With the existing monies that were put in, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand regarding Youth Connect and everything else with CSA, I want you all to assess what exists now. That's number one. If you believe that we are doing exactly what is needed, then I want you to come back to us saying, we need to make sure there's funding to re-up this for the next year. If you believe that we need to add to the existing program, I'm asking you all to give us that info- I'm asking you all to give us that information so that we can fund it accordingly. And I'll be the first person to bring that amendment if the eleventh floor doesn't put in to take care of you all on that, as I said before. Thank you very much. And you got your homework assignment. I'll see y'all in a couple of months. Thank you.
Commissioner Lowry?
Thank you, Chair. And again, thank you all, students, for voicing your opinions, for being here and hanging out with us a little bit. You see how the process works and look forward to one of you all, one of these days, sitting up here as well, helping to make some of these decisions. But Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion just because I think the sponsor and the, both sponsors are not here. And I think in committee, the sponsor was not there, just maybe to shed some light on this. So I'm going to make a motion to the furthest back to committee.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry to refer to committee for the November twelfth date. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Wright. Can we do that without objection? Okay, so moved. Paul and Terry, if you could read item number forty-three and forty-four together.
Item forty-three and item forty-four come from the Milton Community Enhancement Grants with Chairman Brittany Thornton. Item forty-three is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-six operating budget in an amount of fifteen thousand to Shelby Farms Park Conservancy, a charitable organization. This item requires expenditure of fifteen thousand from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Chairwoman Shante K. Avan, Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr., and Commissioner Michael Whaley. This was an add-on item in October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five committee meeting. Item forty-four is a resolution awarding county funds from the FY twenty twenty-six operating budget in an amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to West Cancer Foundation, a charitable organization. This item requires an expenditure of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the Milton Community Enhancement Program Grant Fund, sponsored by Chairwoman Shante K. Avan, Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr., and Commissioner Mikel Lowry. This item was an add-on and amended in October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five committee meeting.
I get a motion, have a motion by Vice Chair Bradford. Second by Commissioner Whaley. Commissioner Thornton has not received. Commissioner Caswell, can I get a, Commissioner Whaley, was anyone in committee that could give a committee report? I think this came down, I think both came down with a favorable recommendation. Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to amend the forty-four for the West Council with twenty-five hundred dollars to be added. Is that?
I have a motion by Commissioner Caswell. I have a second by Vice Chair Bradford. Commend by twenty-five hundred, making that fifteen thousand. We do that without objection? Madam Clerk, could you repair the screen for vote? We're voting on these two items together with the amended amount for West Cancer Center of fifteen thousand, West Cancer Foundation. Madam Clerk, can you please report the vote?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Whaley, Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Lowry, Bradford, and Chairwoman Avan. We have eight eye votes.
Those motions pass. Colleagues, we now get to the section of the meeting. Are there any announcements or statements? Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a couple of announcements. One, I know in light of where we are with the announcement of the SNAP benefits being cut for November, I know a lot of families are going to be impacted. So we are coordinating some efforts to make sure families are getting food in District Six and Seven, across Seven, which would probably impact Eight as well in the North Frazier community. But real quick, for those who I need, again, this coming certi, at thirty thirty-four Old Austin P Highway at the Dwelling Place, we're going to have a major food giveaway, looking to feed over two thousand families. It's going to be a drive-by. We got a drop-off there at thirty thirty-four Old Austin P, starting at eight AM at the Dwelling Place. And then the second and the fourth certi, every month, at twenty twenty-five Clifton Avenue at Impact Church in Frazier, we are having a food giveaway starting at eight AM every second and fourth certi of the month at those locations. Again, if you want more, just call our office, two 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 one thousand. The other is this coming Friday, we're going to have a trunk or treat at Austin P Police Station. There's, I forgot the address, right there at the Raleigh Civic Center, start, it's Wednesday, ten twenty-nine. Ten twenty-nine, we're having that at five o'clock. That's the trunk or treat with the Austin P Police Station. We will not have a stakeholder meeting tomorrow night. And again, just thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Bradford?
I want to give a update from our Justice Center Ad Hoc Committee. We've had two meetings. The first meeting, we had strong attendance. The last meeting was, I wasn't thinking and scheduled it during fall break, so it was kind of low turnout for that one. We've got our next meeting this Thursday. As you'll recall, this was established to develop an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for a body to study our current facility, study our, the county, to know what size facility we need to build, as well as various locations. And so we are still in the process of that ad hoc. We've got a meeting this Thursday. And then I'm asking for the ad hoc committee and anyone else that has comments that need to be included in the RFQ to have them turned into, Ryan Gillespie, yes, by Friday, November seventh. And then we will work to compile all of those comments and get them to purchasing. Purchasing will then generate a RFQ draft based off of all the comments we give them. We expect them to have that back to us in due to the holidays. That's probably not going to be until January ninth. We'll have one final ad hoc meeting sometime around that time to review all the final comments. And then we're hoping by February to March to have the final RFQ on the streets to hire someone to provide this study for us. So we have been keeping minutes and notes from all those meetings. If you have not received them, please reach out to Ryan and she can give you all the documentation that we have gone through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrison?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to announce two dates. February fourth being the date that our lobbyist, Nashville lobbyist Theo Morrison, has coordinated with the current Chair of the Shelby County Delegation Representative Tori Harris as our day in Nashville. And then the second date, February twenty-fourth, to be our day, Tennessee Tuesday, following the NACO Conference in Washington, DC. Just want everybody to have those two dates, February fourth and February twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ford?
Three things very quickly. Number one, to those individuals that represent over twenty-five neighborhood associations in District Nine, we had a community meeting at Greater Paradise Baptist Church. It was full in there. And I appreciate all of those individuals coming out, number one. Number two, they gave me a list of camera locations. We will be canvassing District Nine tomorrow to ensure that those poll numbers, as well as those addresses, are completely accurate. And number three, because I may not be able to say it necessarily next month, just remember that the best college football in the volunteer state is at Vanderbilt University Anchor Down. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Thornton? I love it. I want to thank the staff. They supported the Hoot to Be Heard basketball tournament. It was a five-day experience at all the community centers in District Ten, so we had a great time. We increased our turnout to over seven hundred attendees over the five days. And so over a hundred and twenty young adults signed up to play. And I need to find Commissioner Brooks because North Memphis took home the championship this year. So was able to invest in North Memphis and they have a really great team of players, so shout out to them. Shout out to Rashad and Victor and Marie and Mahogany. And was it someone else on the team that was there, Victor?
Audrey, thank you so much for being there and supporting the event. We are going to plan a seven-on-seven tournament that's going to happen on November twenty-second. So all those football fans and those folks that are interested in playing, get ready for the next event in District Ten. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other commissioners in queue, we are adjourned until Monday, November seventeen.